Full meeting ordered.
Politically to the flag, the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody seen today's agenda? Is any conflicts of interest? Harry, none? It'll be approved as written. Reading of minutes.
July twenty second, twenty twenty five, the Board of Supervisors met at nine AM with Dave Mulvar, Chair Presi- Excuse me, Presiding Members present were Schultz, Dozart, Mulvar, Hayden, and Rossberg. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. On motion, the Board recognized claims for public health and approved claims for all other departments. The Board approved the Recorder's quarterly fees for April twenty five through June of twenty five. The Board approved the clerk record fees for June of twenty twenty five. The Board approved the retirement of Molly K. Nine in the Sheriff's Office. Board approved the hiring of Starla Hanson Administrative Assistant Field Appraiser and Ethan Heiliger, Administrative Assistant Field Appraiser, Assessor's Office. The Board had a discussion with Aaron Walker, AT&amp;T Representative, about the AT&amp;T tower equipment at the courthouse. No action was taken at this time. The Board was made, oh, sorry, a motion was made by Hayden, seconded by Dozart, to approve a liquor license for the Veterans Honor Flight for Wolfie's Bash. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Hayden, to approve a liquor license for Wine Time LLC, Doing Business as Lucky Wife Wine Slushies for the Market on the Farm. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Rossberg, to approve a liquor license for Wine Time LLC, Doing Business as Lucky Wife Wine Slushies for the Riverside Roundup. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Hayden, seconded by Dozart, to approve the renewal of the Service Order Agreement with Secure Spread Solutions LLC. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Hayden, seconded by Rossberg, to approve the publication to set the time and date of readings and approval of the county animal control ordinance. The date is August twelfth, twenty twenty five, at ten AM. Motion passed unanimously. The Board had a discussion with Chelsea Stoll via Zoom about the third-party investigator. No action was taken at this time. The Board had a discussion about tax abatements for several new homes, buildings. No action was taken at this time. Sarah Messick, Recorder, gave the Board the quarterly update for April twenty twenty five through June twenty twenty five. On motion duly seconded, the Board adjourned at eleven thirteen AM. Agendas for the next meeting are posted and available to courthouse on Friday, forty, four thirty PM preceding the next meeting.
Any comments, corrections? And then this will be approved again.
Supervisor reports, Kyle.
Oh, really? How, I think a lot, but, you know, Dave asked David to jam. Oh, they asked if we posted our job opening for the, 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 the hiring meeting, you know, and I said, I should get that done. Because that's coming up in, in August. That's, that's, August starts real shortly here, so try to get that posted. Oh, we need to do that in the local paper, or how far away you want to go with most of that?
And I talked to Colin about that, too. He said, who, to dot our i's or dot our t's, we should post them.
I think the local paper should be sufficient.
Do we have a job description?
Yeah.
We do a website.
Which one are we posting? Are we posting the?
Head, the head position.
Okay.
We are posting the head?
And what Colin said, we probably should do that.
Okay, alright.
And that have.
Everybody would apply.
Have, I wish I was going to pop you out, too.
I'm going to do David, I reply for that, too.
Yep.
Okay.
He said us keep things clean and.
Okay, well, that would be the process. Okay, that process.
Unless you want to do both at the same time.
I think you should.
We can't hardly do this until.
Do that, because we don't have, we only have one open position currently, so.
So you two will do the interviewing then?
Yeah.
Yeah. So then you, but if you, if you chose Dave for the head position, then we'd have to post his position.
Yes, yeah, yes.
Before he's, so then we'd have basically only one person for a while.
Well, we have had some interest shown already, so.
What's Pam's last name?
Can we, or can we use the best second choice as?
We should post it.
What's her last name?
We could. Veterans preference to consider?
Oh, yeah, very good point.
Yeah, I think it's cleaner to post.
Yeah, definitely. You want to be transparent about that.
Yeah, excellent point.
So.
And we'll post the head.
I'm a veteran, I don't know, I was thinking about preference. Never ever got one of them then.
Okay. No, that'll work. Do you need help with that, Jerry, or?
Yep.
Do we have a specific?
I'll send now to you two the, the job description we currently have. If there's anything you see in there, want to update.
Yeah, we might want to update that, because I don't sense. With the retirement of Dwayne, of, you know, we're cleaning up.
Yeah, with all the power stuff here at the courthouse, that groundskeeper stuff.
Yeah, for that.
Yeah.
So, Jean, you had mentioned.
A checklist of what they perform daily, you know, I, I think that we need some kind of quality control over the cleaning process to make sure that there are certain things that need to be done every single day, things that come up that you, do we have such a thing as a checklist?
They have it, I don't have any idea.
I think that.
I don't know that.
Maybe some of those staff.
We have to look through our jobs to come with that.
If we don't, I think it'd be good to have some, uh, employees.
But then in the job description of the new head.
Right.
To make sure.
Right.
That the guy gets that.
That, uh, that there's some quality control to make sure, and I think that we should get folks that work here, employees, uh, with some of the concerns that they have, uh, just to get everybody on the right page of what is required and expected daily. Uh, I, I just think it'd be important to review that.
I mean, two long-term employees that have been here long enough.
Right, right.
There's certain things that they do on a day-to-day basis, a weekly basis, a monthly basis, they just do. Because they know what needs to be done, but is it written down anywhere for the next person to know?
That is my point. That is my point.
Who knows?
And who knows if it's the.
And it needs to be.
Person that's doing this and, you know, who, how does that break up? And I think that they've just worked together so long that everybody just kind of knows. But I think it'd be good to review that at this time to make sure that every, every thing is getting done in a time.
Yep, and I'll, we can review that with your help, because during, obviously, Dave and I aren't probably around here every day to know a lot of that stuff.
Right.
That's going on, but I know we can ask questions and stuff, but I just know that a lot of the groundskeeper stuff that probably is not in there.
Right.
Has got put in. Dave's kind of took a lot of that responsibility on, including his shadow removal and that sort of stuff. That's always going on there, just like.
That's custodial work, not groundskeeper work.
Yep.
Or he keeps that.
Our contact, that position's the contact person for like one, one call. Now, if we have one call to get, you know, locate underground utilities.
There's a lot of crap under our ground.
Well, even working.
Any tower work that needs to be done.
Any contract work that we hire, snow removal mowing, stuff like that, they're going to contact for that. Looking up what Dave brought us today, the dehumidifiers, uh, you know, that stuff.
I think, you know, with, he's, you know, she's the lead and he, so, or how many of those jobs will follow him if he would happen to be successful at getting.
Right.
Those are all things I think should be kind of that assumed, just more written down. But if, if, if someone comes in and, and they're very qualified, what are the things that Dave's doing as the uh, second in command, I guess, how much of that would really fall on the lead person?
That would be up to the person, but I mean, I don't, I don't know that.
You know, I think there's some, going to be some confusion, and I think that the law are defined, we make that in the beginning. Most of the days I'm helping actually kind of get up and roll.
For simplicity, and I guess as to get the ball rolling, we're going to post it for head janitor.
Okay.
And we'll have some time while taking applications to get that updated.
Correct.
Right, that makes sense.
I think it's important to ask those questions and not assume anything and just know what, where's, what position and, you know, because it all has to pay then, too, you know, if you're having these extra responsibilities added on, responsibilities that weren't the head before. Just, I think that leaves for bad.
Boy, you're exactly correct, yeah.
Good luck, guys.
Yeah.
I don't know. All right, that's about it, I guess. I noticed that our, all the recent heavy rains are, maybe I'll have an update. It's going to take a kind of a, just. A lot of, engine running going on our ground roads, but heavy rains of late, which we haven't seen for a few years, so it's kind of nice to see some rain, but.
Hard on everything, shoulders, like even one forty-one, or it's new, which ain't hard to worry about, but you look, eyes washed, that.
Oh, I mean, I, I feel a few phone calls from that, but I mean, it's all understandable, let's just.
Should we go talk another inch and a half once?
Yeah. That's six and three, or inches of rain, I have six and three inches of rain, I was re-jan in July. And then, I know Dennisens had way more than that, so.
Corn looks pretty, I hope you're thirty, you think?
My theory on that is the yields aren't going to be what they've been, sorry.
The mirrors look big.
Spoken like a true farmer.
The farmers turning yellow, like, uh.
Good point.
Specialistic answer, I guess.
I don't think they're there.
My theory directly relates to my trip to, or to have a headquarters in Johnson, they researched it in their, in their greenhouses, they use a hundred thousand gallons less a week and come up with higher yields.
That crazy.
Too much of it.
Too much of it, not bad.
Too much of a good thing, you know?
Yep. Time will tell. Forty-five days away from buying them up.
Last spots in Iowa that are turning yellow because too much.
Yeah, I, I, that, it, it doesn't look like it's stressing it any yet, does it? Well, there are no stress.
Think you get into like central.
I mean, where there's like down to the bottoms where you can see, I, I, I went over to Fort Dodge, and it looked good all the way over to.
You get around, start around Baird and Bagley and.
That look, the bottoms is yellow?
Starting to get a little yellow.
Yeah, starting to yellow, too much water.
That would probably do it, where you're talking about where your yields start to get cut. You bet I'll get that.
Knock on a bit, we didn't get what Northern Iowa had last night, and a hundred and thirty-four mile an hour winds and.
Yeah.
They're probably hanging flat.
Hey, what I've heard that so far is corn standing, yeah.
Good deep roots.
Well, I just, this ox must be extremely healthy and flexible, apparently. I'm sure this ox is a downpouring somewhere, but.
You know, down there, remember when I see that down by a wood mine? Where it's like there was some blow down the edges of the field there, you know?
You'll snack.
I think that was down by Woodbine, Logan, see that? Yeah.
Anyway.
Okay.
That's it.
Craig?
Uh, did have a Wesco meeting yesterday. Uh, just a couple of highlights, Wesco's fiscal year ended June thirtieth. Uh, profit for the year is going to be right at one million dollars. Of course, there'll be some, a few odds and ends bills that'll have to be, uh, credited to last fiscal year that might come in in July to lower that down a bit, but it's going to be right at about a billion. Their revenue is at twelve point two million, which is a record for Wesco. Wait, average wage of Wesco is twenty-two dollars and forty-four cents an hour, up from two, up to two dollars and twenty-five cents an hour from last year. We have a hundred and forty-one employees, which is an all-time high. Uh, they're serving a hundred and ninety-eight people, uh, or, excuse me, a hundred and ninety-five, which is also an all-time high. I think a year ago, they were serving a hundred and seventy-seven. And just for, I just find this, I, I don't want to say amazing, but just so you know, the type, the age groups that Wesco serves is, is an age group from six to seventeen, they serve fourteen people. From ages eighteen to twenty-one, they serve thirty-six. Ages twenty-two to forty, they serve seventy-one. Ages forty-one to sixty-five, they serve fifty-nine, and age sixty-six to eighty-five, they serve fifteen people. So quite a range from the age of six to the age of eight to five. They serve people with disabilities in our community, so quite an asset to have. Uh, there's still not, bake shop is not done yet.
You had a tour.
We did not have a tour.
We did not have a tour.
We did not have a tour.
Oh, Pam had a tour.
Oh, maybe Pam got one on her own, but they didn't while I was there.
Alright, alright.
How's, uh, Board Member search going?
Uh, Board Member shirts, search, uh, Don Lunsman was in, he's kind of been, going to help us through that, and we kind of went through a process on the board and named some people that we're going to contact to, uh, see if we can get some added members on the board. We just need to, I mean, we have, I think, five current members, by our bylaws say we need to have eight, at least eight, between eight and eleven. So, we're short.
Daniel.
We need people. So, our search continues, our search continues. What's that?
Don would be a great one.
Right, that's, that's what I told him. Uh, he said he will consider it, but, uh, that's typical, the response we give for people is that I will consider it.
He's kind of retiring, so he passed the hall, and Lucy's been stopped doing rotary, because he's slowing down.
So, that's, uh, early childhood today, new, so I know we have a lot of items on the agenda, but I think we're going to be, we'll. That's all I got.
And Craig and Jean?
Uh, July's had a slow month, a lot of the meetings, you know, they just don't have a meeting in July because of vacations and everything else. I did not have a meeting last year, last week, um, last year. Uh, but, um, one thing that's changed a little bit is we've had to get a new hospice medical director. Uh, Dr. Wright had been our medic hospice medical director for as long as we can memory, charged two hundred dollars to do that. And, uh, so now we, uh, Patrick Luft has agreed to be the new hospice medical director for, we have to have one, so we have a new director, so have to be a little bit more for that, but that's just, uh, you know, Dr. Wright just did it to, to help out, so. Civil, it depends on our budget on that. They're mad, it's a pretty slow week, so, working with the DHS to, uh, identify the space that they're going to be using over there and get a price set up for what they'll pay to, to use that. It didn't feel right till we kind of got everybody situated, wherever I go in there, the space that kind of designated for them, it still kind of has some things in there, so we're, we're all in transition yet, but I just, she just tried to call me here again, so we're finding a little bit of tape, but talked today a little bit about how we can, uh, present it to them, and then we'll get some written up and we'll bring it back to the board. Matt, but otherwise, that's about it.
We got the parking situation remedied, get the new building, I drove by, there are a couple mornings that, that in town, it looks like it's.
It's, yeah, there, uh, parking is kind of a little bit of an issue that is, is, we have our, our handicap.
The neighbors aren't parking there anymore.
No, no, that is then taken care of. And with the help of the.
I understood, though, the parking, parking was going to be somewhat of a premium, getting earlier, you're going to have to walk a little bit, which is, I mean, everybody needs a little exercise, myself included.
Absolutely, there's a public parking, uh, on, uh, days when there's clients is when it's a little.
That's what concerns me, is the people that come for services, other places to park.
And I think with our next public health meeting, I might identify that, that some pet places need to be for patient parking, not just handicap, especially on, uh, days when they're doing immunizations and things like that.
Yeah.
But that can be worked out internally, you know, that on Tuesday mornings, employees need to park down at the public, because I parked there for three years. So we're working on all that, but think, people, the transition.
Plenty of spaces there at that public parking lot.
Oh, absolutely, yes, oh, yes.
Yeah, even on First Avenue.
Right, right in front of the buildings.
Yeah, on both sides of the street, so.
Uh, even if you park toward, uh, in front of where they use the old building, it's still just a straight shot across our, uh, when we took Wapin for his, or Ryan, or his little visit, we walked over there, it's not, it's all flat, it's not a bad walk over there. So, um, we're still working on getting the other building cleaned out. I did talk to Jim Brown about the interest in that building, he said it's still there, so, uh, that's encouraging to me, but, uh.
What needs to be done to clean it out?
Oh, we could go over there, uh, it's just got a lot of.
Load up while you're there.
Yeah.
Therapy.
Just a lot of miscellaneous, uh, file cabinets of different sizes, uh.
So is it dump or sale bar?
Sale bar, probably, but we kind of put the, all, well, like, we should probably do like Amy did yesterday for the Sheriff's Department, there's things over there, people need.
Yeah, one of you take pictures, we could post those.
Maybe I'll do that.
Do an email or something and get it out there. File cabinets?
Yep.
People don't need.
Not like they used to, because it's all right here.
Yes, yeah, a lot less paper and all the things, so, and there's just no room.
Well.
To put a file cabinet anymore.
I'm not that worried about the desk, because if one of the entities that have been looking at it decide they want to buy it, those desks would be perfect for that kind of a setup, so I, uh, the real estate agents think it's okay to keep some of those things in there till we find that person that wants to purchase the building, and if they're going to turn it into offices, you know.
We can just.
That can very well along with it, yeah. And so we're just kind of, that's why I'm not, like, getting it cleaned down to the studs right away, and it could be valuable.
There's trash, you just have to let Pam and Dave know so they can come in with the pickup and, and pick it up.
I will, you know, I.
Got a dumpster roll off.
Well, all we have is alley access, we can walk the alley.
Is there much trash left?
I have.
I don't think, I don't think trash is the.
You know what I mean?
I mean, if there's a, down there, I mean, if they roll off.
What it could be.
They just come in the back door and get it out of the building, the trash would be inside the back door.
I just don't think it's trash, it's.
Have one of them bring a milk truck.
Yeah, and there's probably not, I, yeah, probably not much trash, but if there is, and they put it in an area, and they're by the back door, or whatever, or by the front door, depending on which is more convenient, if it's upstairs or downstairs.
They had a.
Thing like Pam and Dave know.
Flew of boxes that they had, this, and I volunteered to bring Jerry's pickup in and get rid of them, and then Kim sent me a message that the girls all pitched in and got rid of it, so I'm like, great, you know, so, because I just thought little things like empty boxes that I could take out to recycle, like a, but.
Oh, yeah.
Just to make it look more homey, and, uh, last time I went through there, you know, you go to their, their offices, everybody's smiling, it just, it seems to be working out okay now, no more, once we have our first, uh, public health meeting.
True.
But takes a while to kind of get used to things and, uh.
The window cleaner should be hitting it regular now. He did a thorough up-down cleaning of the outside.
Awesome.
Yeah, because it was a disaster.
Oh, yeah.
Charged us more because it took more to do it.
Right.
But, so.
So what does he do for, uh, those windows on the south side that are, uh?
I think he has a pole or something, or I don't remember what he said, that was a few weeks ago, and I've been fishing since then, so.
Those are not.
I think once the initial one was done, all then.
Yeah, the initial one was going to be expensive, but after that, not so much.
That had a lot of sap and.
Yeah.
Dirt, they can hardly see out of them, so that, that will be awesome. Inside, too, they were dirty, very dirty.
Yeah, I know, I'm thinking he did inside.
Okay.
He does the outside.
Will we be able to get inside, or should we have, uh?
Well, we have custodians, don't we?
We do, we just talked about that. I don't know if that's on the daily list.
I don't know either, it needs to be on a list and get done, so.
I was told that anything that they are unable to cover the past, immediate past chair takes.
I would say that's pretty accurate.
I would say so, too.
Not a motion?
Chair, because he needs to know.
It's a one-armed bandit, you just have to squirt and wipe with the same hand.
Take your arm, yeah.
You ever heard of tag teaming? You squirt your wife.
There you go.
Anyway, that's my update.
I feel, I almost closed the book on that chapter of.
Hello, yeah.
It is, um, I'm hoping that we can have some kind of.
Another chapter closing, supposed to close this month, and I have got a call. Getting really annoyed at that.
Yeah, sorry, I've been. Squirrel.
Digress, you digress.
Sounds like it's a book we're writing.
I will bring up real quick, Colin did call me, there is some more opioid funds coming down the bike.
Yeah, I saw that, that's cool.
Yeah, I did, too.
And it sounds like last time, like how we had to apply for them, these are addition, these are new ones, right? He'll have to apply for.
Applying for that, good deal.
Any of us, we want to, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I know we had some funds, opioid funds, um, from the, from last year, moving to this year. I'll bring you a report of what's currently in there. Um, and I don't know if we want to wait till more of mid-year to see what actually comes in. I can check the dates of kind of when they have come in, um, for, like, Manning.
Yeah.
Um, they would, they always appreciate those funds, and I think it's the most, currently is the most beneficial place for those funds to go.
Pretty passionate about it.
Because we didn't get any other requests last year, um, so.
Maybe, uh, this year will be a little bit different with the restructuring and different, uh, things, so I think that we think.
Oh, yeah, we usually leave some available, so.
I can't remember where, what meetings I was at, they were talking about different things they were using, and they were pretty creative. Other things they were using, those opioid funds, or, I mean, that was along the lines of medical care, but I mean, it was pretty creative. We should probably put, add that to our agenda for four counties, to see if the other four counties are.
Oh, sure.
That'd be good.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. See, if anybody's got ideas, you know, I mean, that money's there, I mean, obviously, we know we can use it for what we're currently using, but if there's going to be additional, maybe there's something else that would really be bad possession.
Right, because they're there, you can let them.
I know, no, yeah, yeah.
Let them work, yeah.
And they stay in that fund, but you know, yeah. Yeah.
I think we have.
Good work for our folks.
We attempt to make sure next week, I think, don't we have the mental health, uh, director coming to?
For next week?
I think it's on August the sixth, I'll double check when.
Our gal?
Yeah. Okay, she had to give her name right off.
Sixth, the one, yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Then let's get it, sorry, that week, oh.
Better put me to more work.
I think so. Yeah, I was going to come, and then Caitlin was going to come along, and just because she's known, and brought a lot of your bounty in that, gosh, can't think of the else name, I want to say Molly, but Molly's the.
Yeah.
She was putting it on.
Sure, if you have an email from her or something, share it, so we have the name, we can put it on.
Right when I hung up and talked to her, just.
Okay, so she probably passed it on there, so, but we'll double check.
Yeah, double check. That's it.
Good time.
Just thinking of my calendars, there, I have some stuff around. Uh, I had Central Iowa Juvenile Detention last Friday. I hesitated, but I believe we're gaining our close session things. The one's closed, had taken care of where there was some dispute, employee stuff. But the one on, uh, thing you guys all read about in the Hart County paper, you know, and talked about, that one seems to be getting close, um, but I don't know how the negotiation, I seen that there was an email last night wanting to share it with all the other members, so as soon as I can update you on that, I will, but there's negotiations going on, so I better. Uh, yeah.
You're good.
I love these meetings, and I can tell you that I can't tell you anything. I feel like I could work for the better.
Cool, man, you get like a cat out of a bag. I got it.
I know, I got a good seat on some board.
Yeah.
Close.
Uh, otherwise, uh, pretty, pretty normal meeting for a change, you're actually, you know, there's quicker than I'd like, but pretty close. See.
Do you attend that in person?
Well, I try to, but sometimes it don't correspond with the truck, it just, it's a freight. It just, but sometimes I could actually sneak over and be on mode at Fort Dodge, and I'd call somebody, see if they were coming through at the right time, and snag me up, you know? But, yeah, generally, for most of the time I was going, it's just a pretty good pull, or three hours over there, three hours back, and I end up close to Fort Dodge, so I tend to stop at Harbor Freight or, you know, somewhere, you know? Think I got some pretty good buys last week. Anyway, uh, let's see, that's only last year. Compensate, they're working on comp time deal, and that just kind of frustrates me, they don't have it, they have vacation and they have sick time, but now they're going to add comp time, and I get why they're doing it, it's the thing, works the same way like with our secondary roads, because you can't leave the, the center unsupervised. So if somebody can't show up for a shift for whatever reason, especially if it's a last minute deal. You gotta stay, well, so they're gonna try to use comp time, but then they were gonna have to carry over like. That was a god awful number, you know, I mean, two hundred forty hour, I know. And so then I made my thing and listen. You could carry over. All right, I could see carrying over like a week's worth. Forty days.
Forty hours.
Forty hours, sorry, yeah, forty days. Anyway, I, I could see that, but then when I explained that about the pay raises and I said, and especially as. Healthy as you guys like to supplement each other's incomes around here. I said, I'm not in favor of that at all. So, I mean, they uh, they're, they're working on that, I agree with that, but otherwise, I could see the purpose for it because. You know, it's like getting called in for a snowstorm, you can't control that. You know, already in, you gotta stay. Uh, so then it makes, it makes sense, but uh. They were gonna try to combine it with vacation time, no, 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 no. I don't like being able to carry too much vacation or anything that you gotta pay back, you know, I mean. We just, hell, those go back to your army days, we could carry sixty, sixty, sixty days, that's it, you know.
Did they talk at all about buying down the employees or?
Well, that's what we talked about, that's what I said, just at the end of the year, that way you could budget for it, you have an idea of what your people are coming up. And then if you don't use that much, you know, you carry that over, you know it's in from last year, you don't have to put that much more in next year, you just carry that kind of stuff. I mean, for that part of the budget, but don't spend it on other stuff, you know, even if you have to put that. Bylaws of that, you know, anyway, so we talked about that. Then they could tell I was a little passionate about it, but uh. Uh, and we talked about contracts. He does a lot of, they do a lot of contracts, so they actually do pretty well. But, you know, it shows like, if you look at here, the amount, it's a million, just call a million and a half here or three and just about four million on another contract. But that's the money they're, their fiscal contract, you know, so that's the money, that's not the money that's coming in dust, but they do substantially. Augment the staff with income. So that helps offset, keeps our supposedly our costs for the juvenile detention center, probably keeps it open in fact, you know. And it sure is helpful promoting the growth of the center as far as.
Those centers that are diversified.
Yep.
And then yet they get shorted by the state because they are diversified.
Yeah, exactly, because they do that on the.
You know, your poll counties are charged, they're getting reimbursed seven hundred, just say fifty dollars a day, that's face because they're not diversified.
Yeah.
And then the Central Iowa, so you're punished, Northwest Iowa's are getting punished because they're diversified and their actual costs are only two hundred dollars a day.
Yeah, I don't like the way they do the reimbursement, I don't either, cause it doesn't create. Fiscal responsibility, it really don't.
They don't. No, it's based off how much money you spent. And the more money you spend, the more money you get.
We ever get a louder voice in Des Moines, we should make sure we're talking about that.
Well, like, from what I've gathered, Carl and Don Cass and. The governor quite often, and she just don't wanna hear it.
Uh, we've been there, haven't we, Dee?
Yeah, you guys have went in with Carl and that again.
Yes, mo- multiple times.
We're gonna have to get people in the legislature to start pushing it, we're just gonna have, I mean, we've get, we've got a few senators and. And a number of congress or the house representatives that are uh. They understand it, they just aren't loud about it because, you know, you gotta pick your battles.
I think it was close to this last go around, the, the, the pipeline debacle and everything, it got. Just got steamrolled and it's like. We won't vote for this, this and that.
I agree with you. But in any event, you can kinda go down through here and look, uh, you had to always remember when you're looking at these detention revenue reports and, and expense reports. Just like here, the way the bills come in and out, you know, it might show up that we're on the negative here, but. Tony's got a pretty damn good staff there, I mean, they're, they're good advantage and they're pennies advantage in the center, I mean, they're not flawless, obviously, but. But uh, but, you know, financially speaking, I think they do a hell of a good job. Then we always have to make sure that we thank Webster County and Marshall County for carrying the big part of the bill on that. We like to tease Bob about it though. And he's a good egg, and if you met him, Bob though, big bald headed guy, tall, he's Webster County.
What you were talking about earlier.
Yeah, he's a character and he don't let anything slide, nothing. So he's, him and Latifah are both kinda Tony's watch dogs.
I can see that one too.
Yeah, yeah, she's, she's actually, she, she, she barks back, I like how she never backs down. She got some, she got some buildings, anyway, uh. So if you wanna look through these. Then you get, they got their net, a network, network report, and we've looked, we've gone over this before, but then the aging summary, which we're not on that. Um, they's not been sending much over there, we've had very little, but doesn't, don't hurt us one way or the other. Um, that was a larger part of our discussion. I don't remember if this was a closed session, but I don't talk out of turn. But uh. As far as liabilities are concerned, we've had, we've had just a lot of discussion about that recently, so just keep that in mind that that is a talking point. And the check register, whenever I go over there for sure, they print the check register off, otherwise, if I'm here, I have to print that, and that's just a waste of paper. I mean, I look at it on the. On the, online, you know, in my email, otherwise, that's a lot of paper, because obviously, they write a lot of checks having all them different things. And then their monthly non-routine expenses, uh. Real big, there was a question, they were low. I actually enjoy this commission, it is one of them where you get too many cooks, they'll spoil the broth, there's like thirty more, thirty seven, so, and there's a lot of us there. But uh. Uh. Now, the questions were just, somebody was asking why some people get paid so much for their. Back and forth, you know, we get paid to go over there, that's through the center and not through here. But uh. Uh, like Kyle's, but Kyle makes more trips, he's the chair, so he's gonna make more trips over there to sign documents to do other stuff. But uh, it's also quarterly instead of every month. It's quarter, that's why it looks like it's a lot, so you see Kyle's got a big check, he's not, he's not exploiting anybody, that's, he's a. In fact, he's been so busy with this, he's usually a really good NACO contender, but he's been so busy with this stuff and. Getting ready to be at the pitch. He's getting a lot more irons in the fire around home, so to speak, so he's a. Hasn't even been making a lot of them, so I've been harassing him pretty hard, he's a good participant in the ag committee at home, so. But uh. New hires. Oh, look at that, and then this is the defense detention report. Um. Tells you the bed days. Denise County Houston, and that's where you can see that, uh. Crawford and all them are, Story County, that's pretty good support this last time too, which is. We can give Latifah a little grief on that, but then, then you got the reports on the kids, no, no individual name or anything, obviously, like any other town. There's less pink lines on there this time, that made me happy, I mean, just things I watch, you know, lots of ladies have come in. Or at least in this report, also. But uh, a lot of them, you know, are like what we hit up in Cherokee, they're in a, they're in there for a day, maybe three or four, thank God. But then you also, you look on there and it's said on that report, you know, the number of days they've been there, there's some of these. I think Central Iowa is becoming more of that. We'll send them over there for.
Long-term care facility.
Long-term care facility, there you go. So anyway, if you guys wanna take a look at that stuff, otherwise, things are going pretty good over there, I mean. Bills are all getting paid in good shape and uh. Everything's going pretty good, so I mean, as far as us worrying about liability, I think there was, you know, a few things there a little bit, but. Even the thing going on Hard County is a financial thing, it's just really paperwork. Get that all straight.
He brought up uh ag committee on the NACO.
Definitely.
And this has been posed to me within the last couple of months. That they need to bring, they need to align their beginning farmer loan requirements more with the local ag community, I mean. There's been a couple of beginning farmers that have tried to get a real estate loan, sure the beginning farmer program.
Okay.
And they require like a hundred and twenty or a hundred and eighty days to close the loan, or the local ag community is like ninety. So there's, or, there's no way that. They can even compete on a farm sale, you know, they wanna close within ninety days, then the USDA will, they're not even close to being able to. Meet them requirements.
Got you.
So it knocks, knocks them beginning farmers right out of that.
Something to bring on to attention.
That they need to align that a little better, I mean, wheels of government, that's so slow that. Beginning farmers can't even take advantage of that application process. Unless they're on a private sale deal.
Let me write that down, so I'll say something.
Good point.
I never thought of that either, it was, it was brought to me a couple of times since, since the last couple of months, uh.
Just need how many days they've been.
Yeah, that's the days they've been in detention, you know, see somebody like this is probably an adult waived. Or I don't know for sure. But it's a fair chance, okay, they're, maybe even said they're waived.
Yeah.
Adult waived, here you go, they see that's juvenile care, adult waived. So some of them, that they aren't adult waived and they've, they've vacationed for a long time, I think that's.
Stay in there till they're eighteen.
Food must be good.
Yeah. Not know about that, but. Local league has been days. Hard to compete. I'll set something to uh, oh, and get that on our topic of discussion the next one. Maybe that's something that we'll have to make as a legislative priority.
Probably just try to align that a little closer with the. With the private sector.
Well, if they're, if they're not able to compete on a farm sale for that very reason, I mean, you're not helping your beginning farmer at all, in fact, you're hurting.
Right, you're tired of learning, I'm under the bat.
And that's a great point, thanks, Kyle, that's why I have to lean on you guys, cause I don't get that much experience for that, so thank you. I do walk, walk around and ask questions about that, like if I'm at the fair or something, and, and, you know. Especially if you get around the four H group where a parent is watching those things.
I think that was somewhere brought to me on fair again, the exact reason.
Oh, thank you, I'll do it, thank you, appreciate it. Let's see, oh, I went out and I had some. Couple of messages and phone calls about our new stretch of street. So I went out there and kicked, they said, what was building washboards? I went like, and it's just where the loose rocks on top is, I like. I had to clean my shoes this morning, they were all white from the dust, I was kicking rock around to see if you could knock it away, but there is, like, Brooks. Like a dip. And Marquez was really biting about that, he says, we should make them redo that whole damn road, you know, I mean.
It's kind of, oh.
Yeah, it is, you know, and I know they churn it up, but I thought they had to come in and pack that with the concrete in it, right?
I think that's the same spot that, that's the same spot where we were discussing with Ben, that, my Jared Brooks there.
Yeah.
I know Ben's trying to figure out how to fix this.
From a safety standpoint, consider motorcycle driver, what did that be like, motorcycle? Oh, no, it's not, unsuspecting, it is unsuspecting. Most guys on the bike are paying attention for unsuspected all the time, but, you know, it's, especially because of the loose rock right now, I could, uh.
But as far as the loose rock, I think. The news, I went on a bandana when we did that, they're bad, crew go out and like sweep some of that stuff up off there a while and reclaim it all the way. I think we did, cause there was too much on it.
Yeah, and there's spots of this where there's too much and then you get close, like right down there where you first come on by the yellow smoke, there's not enough there's. Cause there's some blacks starting to come up for.
Okay. And do we wanna have that company, make somebody come back from that company to. Show over to say, hey, this needs to be.
You know, cause here's the thing I was gonna ask you, I mean, don't we still, I mean, obviously, you're looking for the best bid when you get something, but. Can't we always kinda remember work quality on past performance and.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I mean, just.
Well, I mean, how was that?
You'd like for this to lasted three years with no complaints, you know.
I've been through DOT, so.
Three hours.
I don't think we have the option.
We don't have the option of that.
I don't know how it was bid, I would imagine, I don't.
I don't, yeah, I think Eleanor did for the. I think that one was.
Yeah, cause we've, we had a fair enough complaints with how they did this and how.
But I think them can, you should still. Be able to relay those bids to the, or relay them plates, I would think to the DOT for future bidding process that, you know.
Or just to the contractor to get it rectified, right?
Here's the.
I don't think it's.
I think that's what we need to, we need to probably see if there's, I had enough people asking me.
Have to come back and fix those things.
Like, yeah, we went right after.
Okay.
We're just talking about the road out on.
Reveal's, yeah, it's a good college.
It's kind of only.
I'm sure.
Yeah, there's one spot I'd like to see.
Where's that?
Your group.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then I did notice, I got some call about some washboards there, but that was just loose rock. I went out and kicked it, but there's, it's kinda pushing, like if we could. I don't know, if we could clean up some of that rock and move it down by where the yellow smoke arc is, cause that's starting to push through the black.
We can.
Just to see if that would back in or what, especially when it's hot like that.
Yeah, we can, we can look at, uh, uh, I hate to run the room on it to, uh, you know, start to burn some, I mean, really. Walk that rock out there for a little bit, yeah, but we, we can get some of those stuff.
Do we have some lives left up there where they were, were at their big pile or they take that all the way?
That's, I think they did.
I was gonna look and I forgot to.
I did look at, cause I thought it was all a big pile and like, and it was all gone, so.
Yeah, that's good.
But yeah, there, there is a spot there that I, I think we do need to look at addressing that by Brooks driving there, that, that, that's really the only one, though, the rest of it. You know, we're gonna get some of that washboard and a little bit of a bump here in there, it's, it's a, not pavement, but uh, but that one there, that one.
Even on saving, you can get a little bump here in there.
Well, not like that. But uh, but that, that is, and, and really that came from, uh, we had it shaved up the night before, you know, and uh, later, they, we got signed off like, yeah, it looks good. Yeah, shaved up, it's feathered in nicely and then, then we got that one train that night and uh, that morning, everybody was. You know, a lot of traffic on it, it just pushed that spot down, when that tar went down, it, it just, it just didn't get to, it was kind of pressurable. I think we filled it with, with kind of like a. Little kind of a dirt patch, you know. Place some taurine, then another layer of a chip seal, you know, it just sort of kind of like fill in that little bit of depression there.
Okay.
The contractor should be responsible for? Well, we, we did have it shaped up, he did have a sign off that, yes, it looks good, it's ready for, for uh. It's ready for the seal coat, and it was, but uh, like I said, it's that next.
I guess, do you think then that.
We're gonna see.
That if you contact the contractor to say, hey, since we've signed off on this, this is what happened, you explained to us about the rain and the traffic and everything. Get their opinion, maybe what's the best way to fix this, or maybe they know some other way that we don't, I don't know, I'm just.
Yeah.
It's like they wanna be responsible for, well, too, cause you talk about future jobs.
Yeah, costing them.
You know.
They wanna walk away with a good project and, and uh, yeah, I have left a message with the poplar, okay, so this is, we're gonna. We're good for this, but uh, that one looks good, Bob, what can be done with that spot, see if they're still in the area, see if we can get it.
Still just learning with this new subgrade stabilization process, I mean, we're gonna learn, have to do some learning here.
Yeah.
There's gonna be a little learning curve, but we still don't wanna. Go out and spend the taxpayers' money, they wanna at least as good a product as possible.
But if it's not, if it's bad, if maybe we need to get a dirt patch around there and fill it in.
Yeah.
That's kind of where I'm at, it, it's probably worth, you know, just, like I said, get a little bit of a dirt patch on, on top of that spot, getting it filled in and.
Cause everybody, I use it to talk to bring that spot up.
Yeah.
Just about immediately.
And if we're getting horse boards on something.
And that's mostly rock pile, not.
Yeah, that, like I said, that's just loose agaric, get that dig, get soaked into the tar, but first.
Be nice.
Top of blade it, you know, or push snow off a bit, all that'll be gone and uh, but uh. But yeah, we can, we can certainly prove it all, I don't really wanna do that right now, but it should still. But we'll keep that around in there, soaking in any tar that it kind of bleeds.
Sort of like with that.
Okay. As long as we, as long as we know that, you know, it's still curing or soaking.
As long as we, as long as we know that, you know, that it's still curing or soaking up the the tar, that that's why we're leaving that on there.
Yeah.
Uh, we can explain that when we get the calls, because we are getting called, we are getting. But I think the common denominator of all the calls we get and the the area of concern by Jared Brown.
Yeah, yeah. And we'll see about getting that addressed, so. But I will, I'm aware of that situation.
I I tell everybody that you're aware of it and we're trying to remedy the problem, trying to do the best way to grab it, so.
And I will reach out to contractors, see, uh, see what can be done there. Like I said, they want to walk away from whatever happened with their project. Although regarding, uh, out there, uh, there's some chatter about, you know. They're gonna be doing a lot of asphalt next year. I don't know if that's of interest of ours yet or not, whether we want to maybe see how that road is holding up. Put a fest on it.
Well, we talked about maybe doing that and we were hoping that would hold up for three, four years and then do a four inches on it.
Yeah, no, I'd like to see two two years on it if we're doing something like that.
I'd like to see how that stabilization holds up, you know what I mean?
I would like to too, before we go cover it up.
Yeah, one year on it. It might be a little bit early. I just want to make sure that basically they're gonna kind of perform as we'd like to see it. Like I said, I know that doing some work here in town and in the area, that's always gonna be your better chat, you know, getting down to the reasonable.
Cost effective.
Just food for thought.
Typically, Ben, when you do asphalt, I mean. If you have a gravel road and you're gonna move to asphalt, do you decide what you just do, just go gravel the asphalt, or do you usually have to do a step in between?
Well, I don't know if I've ever could be done in one. Uh, and and if you are going to do, do up an asphalt road. They're gonna want to do a lot more than an inch and a half. This would just be to help up a a seal coat. Don't know about be quite the answer. That's something I want to talk to some, uh, asphalt guys and see how they feel about with, uh, holding up over just a city house area. Otherwise, you'd want to build it up, uh, same as you would a concrete service if you're gonna start a new asphalt road per se. Five or that, uh, six inches, six, eight inches of asphalt, uh, just to begin with, but to have enough structure to. If you're truly gonna have a paper road, right? Otherwise, most asphalt we do is on top of existing concrete providing that things, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, more on that. Uh, bridge over there, they're, you know, kind of slow going, so digging out that second, that south pier there. And, uh, they're bringing up some more of that old structure, some old concrete, uh. Even a couple of timber pile, I believe, that they pulled out of there. So they're running into some, uh, some crud underneath there and, uh, the I'm sure I'm waiting on call for that. Uh, I'm sure they're gonna be looking at, uh, official, uh, working day in regards to that, so, but, uh. But yeah, that's the extent. We kind of anticipated that when they ran that on that first pier, so. Uh, but otherwise, going good. They're gonna be driving pile this week, should be, uh, on that on that solid pier. Possibly, whatever else, next week, uh, bringing in some beams and swinging some beams on the north section of 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 the bridge there, so. Uh, possibly next week. I I would anticipate closer to be down, but. As of right now, with on their hundred and twenty working days, they're sitting right out about fifty working days and so they got seventy working days left just to kind of get a. Estimate of where they're at with that, so. That puts them in that October timeframe that they use all that, so. And the way things have been going with the rain delays and whatnot, who am I to bet they're gonna get into that timeframe, so. Something to be aware of heads up tomorrow. I know. But, uh, would be, it is what it is. It is. They they have them. They haven't worked it, and if they go over there again. Of course, uh, the damages are related to, but, uh. Uh, it's it's kind of the nature of that construction. Uh, but just making you aware of where they're at with that. Uh, they still have the two crews going. Hopefully, they they make some good progress and hopefully the weather straightens out for them so they can, so. Uh. Two hundred forty street down there, the great crew is still working on, uh, their that's slow going as well. They're they're trying to. You know, big gravel road. They don't want to put wet anything wet down on the road, so they've tried to drive things out. It just isn't working very well, so. It's better go a little bit slow going on the great crew, but, uh, they're still, uh, they're still working down there, but they'll be down for a little while, yeah, but. Uh, bridge crew, they're they're addressing some, uh, bridge and culvert action items. We, when we do our inspections, uh, Casey, he puts together a list of. Items to address on each site, you know, whether it be erosion at the imlets or forwards or whatnot, so they're kind of going around doing a lot of that sort of, uh. Work right now and then, uh, after that, they're gonna continue putting in our some large item to culverts and, uh. Now, a couple down south, part of the county, we've got coming in here mid-August, they're gonna send down like. Cremes, uh, Steve Cremes down two hundred street there, but, uh, just culvert work and, uh. That's where they're at.
So we have any of those? No, that's, uh, no, I got a picture down there at the welcome.
We've got some of the form that way.
It's an old culvert from the highway thirty. No woods sold.
That's what I thought.
We could do that. That'd be a full.
I think there's one, I know.
Where is that? That's down at the, uh, welcome center by Missouri Valley. There they get the Freedom Rock and the Riders. We were all on that, but I got to picture that for everybody. I'll bet we got any of them anymore.
I think there's one that I, on F Avenue.
Is there really? No, wasn't it?
I think there's a, I don't know, there was one, what you call it, or you have to go around the county. They might go on show. F Avenue, uh.
You saw it was kind of neat.
That is neat. But no, we've got a couple that formed up that way. You can see the way where the boards were, but no, no, nothing with the woods still, so. Uh, I said, yeah, five minutes here, we'll, uh, roadside this brand and, uh, you know, with all the rain and whatnot, the leaf aggressive are growing, uh. Little bit beyond, but they're we're getting after it, but they're they're still after it, so. Uh. Our field multiplane down there, uh. I'm looking into solutions for that. I I think we've kind of settled in on a possibility of putting in a. Two twin hundred and eighty inch, well, uh, CMPs, basically nine foot CMPs to replace that structure. Uh, our bridge crew, that's something they can handle. If we haven't done a twin, uh, uh. Pipe like that before, but, uh, you know, it it'd be really no different hydrology wise in a twin box. It's, uh, kind of working up to the design to keep it to that high water mark that the original plans and designed for. Which I I think they designed plenty, uh, plenty conservative for for a hundred year event on that roadway and keeping that high water mark, not to get out of bank upstream. So that's what we're designing this one for, uh, and, uh, two hundred, hundred and eighty inch pipes, I think, would be the. A structure that we can, uh, most affordable and our bridge crew can do, so. That's kind of working on design on, but, uh.
Probably probably the fastest round two, I suppose.
That's all we can get in this fall yet. I know they've probably got about six weeks before it get up here, six to eight, but, uh, we can get them in. And, uh.
So that's.
That's kind of where we're.
CMP stands for.
Corrugated corrugated rather than, uh, multiplane where where it's all bolted together, it's all all riveted together pipe, uh, just just like our two foot. Diameter pipe, our our standard pipe that we put out there. It's all one piece and, uh. But yeah, that's about the as large of a corrugated metal pipe as you're gonna want to get. You get to be much bigger than that than you are looking at multiplates, so. And, uh.
Okay.
And, uh, going around looking at these other multiplates, making sure. Trying to assess them, making sure, you know, we don't got any other issues going on with some of these other ones, so. And that's why I'm a little, that's been putting in another really large multiplayer. I see that's been problematic now, so.
Same, one big area to be able to go to. Some big diameter pipe.
Yeah.
But it lasted a long time.
About fifty years. It has not happened once. Uh. Yeah, asked me to look into that, uh, well, that DGR engineering, uh, they're doing a little, look at that, uh, rock arch rapids on, oh, uh, Booyah River, uh. And really, uh, that they're just reaching out to, they just have protocol to reaching out to the community and the and the couch, you know, for any input they might have. Really, any kind of environmental concerns or backwater concerns that could be addressed by DNR and, uh. And through their permitting through there with the Corps and through the DNR. I'd be, yeah, I I did, this will fall a little bit. They'll only have to give adjacent landowners permissions. They have been in contact with him and, uh. If he has concerns about it backing up on us, probably he'll let them know. But really, uh, it's really not something the county has much involvement. DNR is gonna really have to decide to say, oh, we might have something to do, but, uh. Be kind of surprised if they do, so. But, uh, just a little bit where that's at, uh, really nothing bought on it to do on that, so. Uh. Fall auction, uh, on August nineteenth, we'll have our our back, uh, chanting backs, one old, uh, old twenty-six that that would be looking at selling on that auction and, uh. So we remain with, we'd have eight, eight Janamaxles, the six for the mainline spare, and the one for the bridge group, uh, would be what we'd have. In our fleet, uh, after that, so. Uh. So we'd be getting rid of, uh, at least a twenty thirteen back Janamaxle. So really, our our fleet is very current, uh, you know, as far as age, you know. Uh, and then, uh, they should be fine finishing up on gravel today, hopefully, uh, not, they'd be very close if not today, so.
Perfect.
I'm stick.
Oh, you did right on time. Look at how we can work under pressure. Man, you work good under pressure. We're getting them. Having some pressure there.
And we didn't have, we didn't have a public hearing at ten. We're just seeing if you could do it.
Thinking of that, right. Based on that, we might have one every week. I make a motion to open the public hearing in regards to the county, uh, control order.
All right, we have motion in a second. Thanks, man.
Thanks.
It's ten o'clock. Any further discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are in open public hearing. Any grab calling?
I'm just first reading here, I.
I'm probably needed for.
We don't have.
Just to make any changes.
No written responses.
I do have.
Objections or do you have one?
I do. Uh, just a question, uh, somebody's wondering, under section seven, with owners strictly liable for damages. This comes from Randy. In his case, would he still have to go to court for the damages? That's would be in section seven. So if somebody's dog came in and destroyed all your chickens and ducks, would you still have to take them to court or how would those damages, you know? Just talking about that.
You still have to take the course.
You still have to take them to court. That's that's.
They still get fined according to it.
Yep.
They get fined, but they don't have anything to.
So we had, I don't. I don't have it with me today. I printed it, but I, under section seven, so it says owners strictly liable for damages.
Section seven?
Yeah.
It's in our packet.
Yeah. Oh, I'm glad. Let's read it out. It'd be nice for Colin and clarify that a little bit. Um, figured y'all still have a.
Well, let's see if we want to change it. Animal shall bite, attack, or attempt to bite or attack any person or domestic animal without provocation. Owners are strictly liable for damages. Animal or dog that bites or attacks a person or domestic animal may be deemed a dangerous or vicious animal or a hostile.
So it says they're liable, so to me, it almost appears that you wouldn't have to go to court because the ordinance says they're liable for the damages. So what would the purpose be to take them to court? I think the the clarification may is how do you assess the damages? How would you know what the damages are, you know? Similar to what Randy brought into us, how much a duck costs, you know. Pictures, how, I think we should clarify that.
That's a good point.
Yep, and I think this is about make sure that we don't write it. There's still some.
I would think that like to get your livestock. There'll be civil. I mean, if it's a fight, you had to go to the doctor. I can see them have to recount, count that.
Yep.
But then really helps a day different. That's a good point.
I I just think some clarification on that before we sign it off into, uh.
Leave it there.
So that was my only thing that, uh.
I guess it's your first reading.
Right, so that's why I wanted to get that all out there.
Yeah, it's a good time.
Yes, this is the time. So that's what I have on section seven. So clarification needs to be made on how those damages would be assessed and, uh.
Kyle randomly.
That's all I had. And I don't know how we would word it in there. Uh, we make it clear how those or how that.
His odds lay over.
All right. Very good.
Cindy asks questions. Cindy?
Yes, I would just like a clarification. How many towns have their own ordinances in Crawford County about animal control? Because this is the county ordinance, correct? And. So how many, how many towns have their own? And if they, the towns do have their own, what supersedes? Is the county or the city or town?
County does not include any incorporated areas. So this is only for unincorporated areas. The the cities have to do their own. It doesn't, it's not like one supersedes the other.
Right.
If a city doesn't have one, ours doesn't.
Ours doesn't? It doesn't take effect for a city that doesn't have one.
They don't have one, yeah, but it's state.
State, if I have one has. What? So I don't know where in that comes into play, you know, in it. Uh, you're maybe talking about city of Dennison, uh.
And the city of the state is an animal at large.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
It's not a malicious animal, right? It's more for ones that are running loops.
Okay, so, yeah, it does. So I'm just saying, for like an area, and if they don't have one, then this. This would not cover it. It would be the state.
Because we, we don't have, we don't have authority over city incorporated areas.
Gotcha. Okay, I just want a clarification on that. Thank you.
Yep, thanks for asking.
This is the time for those clarifications, so. All right, I'm gonna stand, sir. All right, that's good.
You got another picture in case somebody calls complaining about the muddy roads, like when they get wet.
Just to remind people, it can always be worse.
That's it looks like you in there.
Yeah, I bet.
I'd like to have that card.
Sorry, gang.
Yep.
That rusty way I was describing from my grandfather.
Agenda, but.
That's how I got back.
I thought it'd be late.
Grand upstairs quick.
Yeah, sorry. I'll grab them phone.
That was a picture that's now.
You just didn't go to town at the county shift.
That's how I got back.
That's a draw, yeah, that's a draw for county.
That was actually, uh, I claimed it was a picture of highway thirty down there at the welcome center. Josh, dang, I didn't know highway thirty would serve for that.
That made.
I'll picture an arch in Iowa.
That made us.
You want to have to steer, just getting up.
Getting the right way to yours.
Always your.
It was snow or something. Start building for damage. Morning, Colin.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning, beings.
We've got a. Uh, Gene brought up a, in section seven. But that's, they're looking for clarification on. Uh, strictly liable for damages. Now, owner is, does that be up to the courts to decide those damages?
Right, yeah, so strictly strict liability, and I made notes on this because that's an area of law that I don't. Uh. Plaintiff's attorney. Stuff, but strict liability is just a measure of damages. Um. And it's regardless if there's an intent to harm, so it's just the damages. So a defense against the damages wouldn't be, well, I didn't mean for my dog to get off leash. Uh, so I can't be held for what happened because I didn't mean for it to happen. So a strict liability. So strict liability is, well, regardless of your intent of what happened, the damages and the liability will stick.
So based on this ordinance, then is the, um, does the owner of the animals that were injured, uh, or killed or that suffered the damage, does he have to take that person to court? To get the damages, or can the damages be assigned or fixed based on this ordinance? Can the county do that, or does he have to take?
It depends if it's pursued on, as a criminal violation or as a civil infraction. So civil infraction would be able to be pursued, um, you know, I took notes on this too.
I think it's a very thought out question, you know, as far as, because this is from the individual that actually brought the damages, you know, that he never got made a hole on, even though he did take them to court. And so the question would be, if that exact same thing happened again, and he had seven dead chickens and nine dead, uh, duck. Does he have to go to court again, even though the?
Well, if it's a criminal action, then yes, absolutely would have to go to court again. As far as it being pursued as a county infraction, the damages for county infractions.
If it's criminal, you take care of that, right?
Yes.
And if it's civil, he'd have to get an attorney.
Well, any court action, people can get an attorney.
Yeah.
But you would handle it, since it's a, uh, county violation?
My office would handle, yes.
So you would typically then, if, if the county's gonna handle it, then they're gonna go to the owner of the animals that were injured and say, what do you value these at?
Right.
He says, I value these at five thousand dollars, then that's what we assess the penalty at, is what he says they were valued at.
So damages can be challenged, so in any criminal matter, damages can be challenged separate from the offense. If someone steals something and they plead guilty to the theft, and then they say, okay, uh, I'll plead guilty, but I don't agree that what I stole was what you saved us. So they're allowed a separate hearing on the actual cost or value of the thing. They can challenge the state's, it's called the state's restitution request. So, okay, you stole something worth twenty-five hundred bucks, so I'm charging you with theft in the third degree. Okay, I'll plead out, but I'm fighting the damages because I don't think it's worth as much as we save. And it's a, it's a weird, uh, little tick in the law, because in order for us to charge something, we have to establish an initial value. The higher the value, the higher the penalty, or the higher the, the degree of theft. But you can plead to a degree of theft and then pay restitution under that amount. If that makes sense, uh, because you can fight the restitution separate from your guilty, whether or not you're, from your guilty pleading conviction. So that would be similar to here, so if someone claims five thousand dollar loss on chickens, then, okay, my dog definitely ate all your chickens. But they're not worth five, great, so I'll, I can plead guilty and then I'm gonna fight you over the damages, and then we go to court.
And they would fight you?
Yes, yeah, well, we would be in the court and, and then the, the judge would be the deciding.
The owner that suffered the damages, he would have to hire an attorney.
No, no, that's, okay, I see, no. In, in, I would, my office represent the county on behalf of, uh, to enforce.
Force this ordinance.
Correct.
Yeah, I would enforce the ordinance for the county, it'd be, uh, my office going, fighting to enforce the ordinance. And so it's a, it's a common thing, when there's a victim, what we often tell people is it's not, it's not you versus the defendant. It's the state of Iowa versus the defendant, and I represent the state of Iowa. Of course, you're critical to this whole process because you're a victim and you're possible witness, so we couldn't do it without you, but it's not you versus them.
You've got the victim.
Good point, Colin, that's a good point.
And so it'd be the similar thing, it's the county versus the defendants, not the victim versus the defendant.
That clarifies it, I believe, yeah, all right, thank you very much, that's, I'll relay that to him.
That's a great point, though, Gene, I'm glad he brought that up.
I am too, he read it very thoroughly.
Glad that that was a little civil thing, that's about get restitution.
You get the restitution through the criminal matter, yeah, yep.
Good to know.
Very good, all right.
I suppose if that person still didn't deal, like he was served correctly, he could still take it on. So I want to say, you know, I do believe that chickens were worth five thousand, I'm gonna get my five thousand dollars, I will pay for that, I will get my own attorney and take it further.
I think there is a provision in here that says, nothing in here prohibits a person, it's section ten, nothing this ordinance absolves owners of any civil liability that may result from.
Yeah, I remember.
property, so absolutely, if the court.
That's why I assume they were separate, they're.
Right, so pursuit of a violation of this ordinance does not automatically foreclose a victim from pursuing other civil damages separate. But they would have to do that on their own.
Right.
I, I would, my office would not represent that pursuit.
You would just say, you know, we, we did what our ordinance states we were gonna do and.
Right, and, and so like, you know, market value of chickens and, um, and I think there's also a provision in here, and I think someone asked it last time. If, uh, some, uh, a flock of hens laying, laying eggs, like, we don't go after all the eggs that they could have laid for the rest of their life, in, in part of the damage, we go for what that chicken's worth, not its potential worth for the next, I don't know how long chickens lay eggs.
pounds of the dog.
Yeah, right.
As far as our public hearing goes, the first reading, we haven't had any written responses.
Objections.
No objections.
I think we've had people request it.
Okay, did Cindy did ask a question about where, uh, falls with unincorporated incorporated, but, um, to move forward, what are our options, we keep some? You'd have second and third reading with your wave.
You'd approve the first.
So, once it's published and you have a first reading, you can waive the rest, and Terry, I don't know.
I think that's right.
I don't know if it's been published yet, though, I know you, we just got to see you a couple days ago.
And let you know that it was gonna be published, I believe the thirty is. I think that's right.
So just, you know, at any point along the line, as long as it's been published and read once, you can kind of, my recollection is you can waive the rest of it, uh, by, by vote of the court.
I think.
We can consider this for the first reading.
For the first reading.
And wait till it's published.
Does first reading have to be after the publish, or?
At least, I didn't bring my notes, I can go grab.
I mean, if we agree to have a second reading next week after it's been published.
Then you covered it.
Then we covered it.
I think. Not next, it has to fall in the ten and twenty or, uh.
Four and twenty.
Four and twenty, which would be, if it's published on the thirtieth. Megan, is it the thirtieth or thirty-first? The publication? Oh, okay.
So that gives us four days.
Okay, yeah.
Read it a second time in the way, if, if you want to see where the rest.
Depending on.
Right, see what the response is.
You have that option, right.
People are just starting to take, get copies out of the auditor's office, see a published copy, they certainly have to give them time to respond back to this.
Awesome, of the questions that we've had, just with it barely being out there, I'm sure there'll be more, once people have a chance to completely.
Perfect.
Okay, so ours today's hearing, then, we can come out of public hearing.
Yeah, I think for that, we're motion to close public hearing.
Motion second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Colin.
Yep, now I'm back on it. Thank you.
Is Sarah outside?
Were you taking action?
I'm thinking, do we need to take any action to establish the second reading?
I was thinking we should, uh, approve the first reading, because that's what we had here.
Yeah, I think so, make a motion, we need to try to make a motion just to approve the first reading and.
Add next.
Set that in time for the second reading.
Catch your motion?
I, I can make a motion that we approve the first reading, the animal control ordinance, and set August the fifth at ten AM for the second reading of the animal control ordinance.
I'll second that.
Motion second, any further discussion? Hearing on all, favors say aye.
Aye.
All right, chair votes aye.
Sarah had called me, with it being the eightieth, um, anniversary of the Crawford County Fair next year. She was wanting to talk about some of the improvements that they were planning on making, and some of the things they're planning on doing, and was going to get our temperature on maybe a little bit more of a donation for next year, so that's kind of what that was about, so.
She's not out there, Sherry.
No, she may have gotten busy at her job.
She the president, or?
Uh, she's the treasurer.
Pressure.
We can.
And they're so grateful for all that we do.
We'll move on, and if she shows up over for time, we'll move on to letter of support for Wesco Industries, which was in our packet, and Craig reached out to us for that.
I guess I can maybe just follow up a little bit, as I did get an email from, uh, Deidra, who's the, uh, COO, uh, at Wesco, and I'll just read you the email, it just says, with the state's recent updates regarding five bedroom home, I've received clarification that we are now able to submit an exception to policy requests for a property located at eleven oh two North Sixteenth Street to be considered a five bedroom home. While the home is currently designated as a four bedroom due to the conditions tied to its purchase with ARPA funds, specifically that it was used, that it be used as a four bedroom residence, we now have a potential pathway to amend that designation. Yeah, to proceed with this request to the state, we are required to submit a letter of support from the county in which the home is located. Previously, the regional CEOs were able to provide these letters, however, with the disbanding of the regions, that's no longer an option. Uh, what, and then she just asked, what Crawford County Board of Supervisors do, would provide that letter? And so that's the letter that's in the book, or that was in her packet.
I saw it.
So if everyone's in favor of that.
I think it's a great cause, we're utilizing our space the best we can.
I would make a motion for Dave to sign that letter and support it.
You want us all to sign it, or?
I just, just.
Okay.
Your name's on there.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing on all, favors say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. She'll pass it around.
If he signs it, I'll take it now, man.
I'm gonna stamp the back.
Thank, putting that together.
Megan did. Driving countryside, so.
So since we signed back that, if I take something to Wesco, you want to keep this copy, that stamp, I would just make a copy of this?
Yeah, we can, yeah.
Or how do you?
Yeah, we can, or can I, I could scan it in and we could email it to Deidra?
That would be.
And she could print it?
Yeah.
Then she just has the front?
I mean, you have the original.
Yeah, it'll be colored, it'll be exciting.
Okay, that'll work.
Is that okay?
That's perfectly fine.
I can, so I'll scan it, and I'll email it to you, and you could forward it to Deidra.
Good.
That way, I don't need to gather Deidra's email from you and all the things, so. Or Megan can email it to you, whatever, but, yeah, we'll do that.
Email it to me, that's my skin, I can email it.
Perfect, thank you, yeah.
Really do.
We move on to Sherry, you ready?
You want I'll sign, or do you see it?
I did not see it, but that's an offer.
She always gives me crap at it, she's kind of scribbled.
Oh, very nice.
Later the plane.
Long as it's consistent.
That's right.
Something you all, your signature.
Write a word.
Those kind of look like your art piece.
Do I get to keep one?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so this is my semi annual report, and as we've discussed before, when money comes into my office, the person bringing in the money tells us exactly where to put it, so all of that's out of our hands. What I'm looking at is our bottom number, and to show that we balanced, and that's that sixteen million, seven thirty, seven, uh, one ninety-one and fifty-one cents. So as far as where money goes or any of that, that's up to each department who brings money into us, and, uh, tells us where they want it. Um, the one thing on here that was, been bothering, uh, Amy and I for a while, is the, um, not assigned report group. And you can see that's pretty high, we looked clear back to, I think, Jerry's last report.
Jerry's last summer report.
And it's just, it was on there as well.
Or was it just that Sharon?
Well, I think.
The last, the, um, not assigned report group, so I got ahold of, um, Tyler, it's kind of hard getting through to their tech support. They're working with Ryan, they think maybe we've got something in our programming that's not set up. Really, that's neither here nor there, because the bottom number shows that we're in balance.
Not a side report, that's in I C.
Right.
It's something that happens, I think, in the schema part, which is at the guts of, of our financial, um, anyway.
Yeah, it's accounted for, but it's just. It's, it's, yes, exactly, and.
Which is a programming thing that we're gonna get fixed.
And they, they are, they reached out to Ryan this morning, or was in the process of reaching out to him, but like I said, we went clear back to even Jerry's last report, it, it's got the same thing on there, so if it's never, no, no changes, nothing, it's not anything new. I think you guys have asked about, the number changes, you know, it changes all the time, but.
The wording, that, the report shows up the same way that you're seeing it, right?
Yes, yes.
But it, it stayed steady at thirty million cents you've been doing the job.
No, that number changes all the time.
A lot, okay.
We have different revenue, different expenses every year, yeah.
That number matches.
It matches something?
The total revenues, the line that's total revenues, it shows the twenty-nine million.
Yeah.
So the number is there on the report, we just don't know why it says not assigned to a group, and that's what Tyler and Ryan will be working on for us.
My, my question is just that, with the expenses at thirty million, seven hundred thousand roughly, and the revenues at twenty-nine, five, you can see that's a difference of roughly one point two million, and yet the difference between the beginning balance and the ending balance is sixteen, seven, to seventeen, seven, exactly a million roughly. So is that change in outstanding, is that the number that brings up that difference? Why that's not, you know, exactly between total expenses at, you know, thirty million, seven, revenues at twenty-nine, five? Is, is that, what is the change in outstanding number, I guess?
Change in outstanding are checks that have not cleared. That, that one twenty-six.
Right, one twenty-six, three forty-three.
Those are checks that are out there.
But all the checks, they always stages of stuff.
Again, like, my office is concerned with the volume number balancing, and that's where we are at. We're just trying to clean the report up a little bit, so it doesn't show the not assigned to the reporter.
Our ending balance is what's left over after revenues and expenses have been related.
Treasure's balance.
Is that the money that lights and uses, or is it the?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so it's, it's actually working for the book.
Yes, and you have to watch standing balance every month, know what's coming in and coming out.
Exactly.
So that you don't get overdrawn.
Yes.
Yep.
And one of the last reports that Amy showed, uh, brought in to me was our CDs, and in the last fiscal year, um, we generated six hundred fifty-eight thousand, four hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents in interest off of the invested, off of our investments.
That stays in your ending balance? Does that get transferred to general fund?
That goes to general, that's, um, interest on investment account.
So her goes to general?
Yeah.
Her balance is all the funds.
Okay.
All, all, that's what's listed up here are all the funds.
Okay.
All the money that comes into our office.
Cowalship.
Whoever.
Scott, Kevin, Kenan, it's capital, it's wellness, yeah, all the funds, yeah, yeah.
Right, interest on investment accounts, yes, um, anything that is in excess over the interest, um, required to be allocated, so, so the, uh, monthly, we can cover our interest on investment special accounts. Um, we can allocate that out of our savings account.
Uh, for our standard checking accounts, that always gives enough to cover those. This directly goes into the general fund.
That's right.
But when you just asked about that money being used for interest, that's why I brought this up, just to show you what our money.
Yeah.
What are, what are, we have done.
Yeah, good. Do we have any funds that never show any, that maybe still get revenues, but we're just, we never spend out of those funds? Do, do we have some like that that maybe we started? I don't know, years ago for something and we still have money in there?
Funds that don't use, I mean, we, mental health, we, we don't fund the mental health, so that sets zeros, that's.
That's the one at zero, but we don't have any that are.
Receiving revenue but not being having any chances.
Or haven't, haven't received revenue, but they just sit there with revenue in, but we can't spend it. Or don't spend.
Right, we try to clean those uh our.
So I couldn't tell by looking.
The most recent one is debt service and we just paid off about, paid off the debt. Um, with fifty-six, almost fifty-seven thousand dollars in there and eventually we will get that cleaned up.
Okay.
Behind the.
The uh.
Let's figure that out for Tyler and what we have to do to clean the report, so, yeah, yeah.
When that, like the six hundred thousand-ish for the interest, now we, we use that to reduce our tax asking next year, right?
No, I mean.
We could.
We don't know what it is ahead of time to budget for it. How about that?
For this year's, this year's.
It'll go into the general fund, it'll be excess, it'll be, it'll supplement if there are any budget amendments that are paid for out of the general fund, it will. It'll, it'll be in the general fund.
I just want to make sure.
It's your cushion. Does naturally change tax asking because I, we can't, yeah, we don't know what that amount's gonna be to be able to.
To me, uh, that's a good point with any amendments, it just cushions on general fund or savings account.
For the amendment.
Yes.
Or.
And that was what I'm getting at.
Or who chose to.
That would reduce our tax asking because the tax amendments would be something we didn't ask taxes for this year, but we don't want to have.
Right, and we never can, you can't ever tax ask for an amendment because we're in the middle of a taxing year, there's, we don't change levies and things in the middle of the year.
To me, I'd be already be like.
That makes sense. Kind of confusing.
If we wanted to say. But not tax out of our real basic, you could spend down our general fund, knowing that that interest.
Yeah, and that's what I'm getting at is.
We don't know what that number.
Make sure that that's decreasing any tax asking we got, so next year we don't have to, you know, if we bought extra white rock there. Our revenues.
We don't want to go over what our interests are bringing in either.
We always need to make sure for disaster situations and whatever else.
Or do we have more?
Recertification. Right.
We, uh, uh. From seventeen million in our ending balance, just as a question, well, I'm not, we're at sixteen million dollar, million dollars less as far as ending balance. Should we be concerned about that? Or are we just high on spending this part of the year?
I feel that's what it is because we spent out.
I mean, we've lost, I mean.
That last claim's run.
It was well over a million, I think, just from the engineer's office, our last.
And it's usually Paul's office where he's paying for equipment because it's. Waited for the end of the year or the beginning of the next year budget. Alright. So there's always a huge base.
I guess that's why, that's the thing that I noticed out of this, and I appreciate the report because I just like a million less than.
Yeah, the last claim to run is always what makes, gives our office a little bit of anxiety because we know we've got a huge claim typically coming from the engineer's office.
A huge claim coming in July, usually when the new fiscal year starts, usually when we assume the purchase of the.
Order day or so.
Before.
The ones we received in the spring and are paying for the first of July, yes.
But that would show up this before.
It shows.
Not the July, right, since.
Right, because it's starting July. Yes.
The point, so this one. July seventh, fourth.
Not July.
First of the fourth. Yep.
Anything else to note, Sherry?
No.
How does it compare to a year ago? I guess what was the balance a year ago? Do you know that?
Well, the beginning balance.
Right, that's just six months ago. I just care as little as.
Oh, January, you're right.
They almost match.
They almost match?
They almost match. I mean, I can grab the report.
No, that's fine. I just.
But just not, I had, they were just.
That's right.
You, you look down and go, oh.
So that's. Kind of what you want to see happen, I would think, so. We, they're, we're.
Big systems are objectives.
That's true.
Didn't jump up.
It would only take a second to grab them.
Yeah.
You take that thing out.
You guys looked at it already.
For future, for future reference, if you include that, that'd be great. Have no reason to doubt the other one.
No.
But if you ever wanted to be balanced, I'd give you.
That'd be great.
Was there any?
If you ever see a tremor, it's like on, right?
So is this something?
I'm retired.
Well, for, for your office to save you some. She don't like to know that I'm late. As we're here. Prevent you with the information, like you say, they tell you where to put it. So I'm assuming that you just put it in there and at the end of six months, do you just hit the button and this thing is generated? Is that how that works?
Yes.
Okay.
And then if it's not matching, then Amy starts digging into each different um revenue code to find out where we're on.
And then you just for curiosity's sake, do you check it other than within the six months, like?
Actually, monthly.
Every month?
Sometimes, mine, sometimes.
Twice a month or?
We don't want a big surprise.
Right, exactly.
I wouldn't see here to track back where it could have been.
Right.
Yeah, we know, we know that it was in the last thirty days because this is checked on a monthly.
No worries, man.
Cool.
Always.
Absolutely.
Any uh further questions for Sherry's discussion? I interrogate a motion to approve Sherry's semi annual report.
Make a motion.
Motion by Jean.
I'll second.
Second by Craig. All favors say aye.
Aye, 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 thank you, sure.
Thank you, Sherry. Back and forth, Colin again. We do have Chelsea on.
No, excuse me.
Call in.
Colin, we got a feeling, what do we got, thanks?
We are on to hiring independent investigator, internal complaint.
Alright.
Chelsea, I see you're on, so thank you for being here.
Did we take?
I will need Colin here for effects too. Anybody want to go out and help finish Monday law? I don't know if we're gonna get the date thing done or.
Are you bailing yet?
No.
I could. I dumped that thing.
I'm surprised Eric didn't have to bail ours. I thought he was gonna mow it twice.
Do you like a whole pile of tip today? He'd probably agree with me.
You have a cuss jar somewhere, that.
There you go.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, we are up to the third party independent investigator. We talked about last week a little bit. You guys were gonna meet on Thursday. Chelsea's on, Chelsea's on, Pam on.
I don't see her. I'm gonna shoot her a text. Yeah, I sent her an email this morning with the agenda. Saying that it would, you know, it's hard to guess these things, but between ten thirty and ten forty-five is my best guess this morning.
Would have been a pretty good one.
It did pretty good. Take them though. For other people.
That's why we like having a cross aisle.
Um, I suppose I can start off a little bit. Hi.
Well, sorry.
Okay. So this would be the engagement contract uh with Ms. Born and her firm. Uh, before she joins, you can just thumb through it, some things that I wanted to point out. Her rate, paragraph three point two. I'll try it out. Is three ninety an hour. Um, she can get on and explain, uh, because Chelsea and I uh spoke with her after last week. The board meeting last week. And I'll let her, of course, I don't want to put words in her mouth, but essentially, and Chelsea, correct me if I say anything wrong. Uh, at this point in time, it's just really impossible for her to give a ballpark figure of the total cost. Uh, but it will accrue at that rate. Um, she has an idea already of what the potential scope would be. Um, she has no idea if that scope that she envisions, envisions it now would have branches that she would have to follow up on when she gets there. Uh, so really at this point, uh, I think what Chelsea and I discussed with her is that. You know, the investigation would start. And then after the initial envisioned initial scope, she'll have a better idea of a ballpark. Uh, Chelsea, does that sound about right? Yep, and she is actually jumping on right now, so we should see her momentarily.
Don't forget, Jill, this time, Ty.
Chelsea is a considerable kind of disease. She's centrist, she's a centrist.
There you go.
She's a centrist. Longer for Kennedy.
Good.
It's the newest security. So Colin, would you be independent of this investigation? Would they be contacting you at all or be involved or?
We had that conversation. Um. Ms. Born would like to have a point person. Uh, and that point person can be me. Um, although as I've been discussing with the board, there might be a moment in time where I have to just kind of bow out of everything altogether. I don't think we're there yet. Uh, and we could designate a chairperson as a point person. But yeah, I, 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 I wouldn't be involved in anything other than kind of a go between, if I was involved at all.
Line up.
Line up stuff, giving out information, contact information, things like that.
Probably that's a bad idea, so you give some fight chance, and I'll be right there if I give two.
Sure.
I agree, you see her every day. He doesn't have big cattle.
I do send him videos once in a while.
Yeah, that was nice.
Just asking you to come help. Don't fall for it. Don't fall for it.
He was offering uh horse rides.
Yeah.
That's his bait switch.
That's it, I wondered.
Yeah.
I wondered.
Now that you're here, Ralph's fair gloves.
That's how he's schmoozing with the ankle staffers and then.
I was calling, usually when Jean calls me, I have one about running me over.
Yeah, and I wonder if I need to call nine one one.
Oh.
That'll work, yeah.
She is having trouble getting on.
The, this contract is pretty straightforward, I mean. Her rate.
Do you have an idea typically how many hours are accumulated in?
I would average, it's all different. I would have to let her talk about that. Uh, another thing you should, the board, I wanted to point out, paragraph three point four, uh, bills would come in monthly. Payable on receipt, so it'd be about running, depending how long it took, but it would, it would be a, a running payment.
Can be that complex of an issue given.
Don't know, never investigated one.
Um, but the last one was gonna be more complex than it really was. She doesn't work for a dairy, does she?
What?
She doesn't work for a dairy, she's a milk girl.
That Chelsea laughed and that's.
You want to have Pamela? Need Chelsea to call you right away? You can just put her on speakerphone or she can't.
Chelsea have your number? Maybe she can.
Yeah, there you go. Call her.
Oh, you probably have your Pamela's email.
Well. Times it could be a bird to bear to get off, so.
Yeah.
This is Pam.
Pam, hey, it's Colin. This is my cell phone. I got you on speakerphone here at the supervisors' meeting. We heard. That you might have had some technical difficulties hopping on the Zoom, so we thought we would just give you a call.
Well, I appreciate that. I'm not for sure what's going on. I am on the website. I am on the link. I go to get the password and it says it's not permitted. So, and I got up, I just got off another Zoom call, so I know that Zoom's working. I just am not for sure why I can't get in it, but thank you for calling.
Yeah, so is this a good, I mean, you're on speakerphone. Can you hear, I mean, I think everyone can hear you.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
I can hear you guys, great.
So we have, the board each has a copy of your engagement letter. Uh, I pointed out a few things, of course, they have it to read. It's fairly short, uh, your rate, uh, your monthly billing statement, right? Um. And then. There's also the potential for extra costs, depending if, how the investigation goes as far as like postage, filings, travel, um, research, right?
Correct.
And then there's the option for uh paperless billing that the, the board would have to opt in for, and that's the final page. Um, I think our chairperson, Dave Mulbauer, had a, a question um. About the scope, uh, so Dave, I'll just talk to you.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, Ms. Born, uh, just kind of in your experience with these type of investigations, wondering. How long they usually take, how many hours typically, not anything out of the blue comes across, just kind of get an idea of the overall time.
Sure. So, uh, let me just start, if you guys mind if I give you a little bit of background about my experience in this area?
That'd be awesome.
Yep, sure.
Um, so I work with an organization in Nebraska called the Nebraska Intergovernmental Risk Management Association. It is the insurer, it's a pool of counties in Nebraska. We have probably. I think we're up to eighty-four, eighty-five of the ninety-four counties in Nebraska are members of ARPA. So I answer a hotline um for any elected or appointed officials in a county that are dealing with personnel matters. Through that, um, and I, I've done this for just over twenty years. And so I've got the opportunity to work pretty closely with officials in counties and deal with a handful of public sector issues. Which is very unique compared obviously to the private sector of what we can do and what we cannot do. Um, through that process, we routinely do um investigations for counties involving discrimination, harassment, embezzlement. Um, retaliation, whistleblower claims, et cetera. And so, uh, I, uh, when you look at a, an issue like this where you have, you know, three individuals alleging discrimination. Um, it's difficult to tell you, you know, hey, this is how much time involved. But to me, it, the, the issues are pretty narrow from the standpoint of. Your wage information is well documented online. I mean, you can see the history, all of that is very basic. The, the, the unknown for me is what allegations do these folks have? For example, are they gonna say, well, you know, one of our board members said X I Z, they don't want women in these positions, women belong at home. Are, you know, are they gonna have email text correspondence? Are they gonna have five other employees that heard they? It's hard to, to know because I obviously don't know the facts at this point. It's hard to know where they're going, but I would always recommend that we start with interviewing each of them individually to understand what their concerns are. And why they feel like they're being discriminated against. At that point, if, you know, if there's, you know, hey, I heard direct evidence of discrimination. Um, someone shot me an email, someone told me something that they said, then it's. Someone shot me an email, someone told me something that they said, then it's interviewing with, you know, folks that witness acts. And that's kind of the unknown of, is this just that, hey, I'm lower than the county sheriff and the county attorney in wages, therefore it must be my sex? Or is there, you know, hey, we were at a party, five other people heard this, you're going to hear this, there's other, here's emails, correspondence. Social media posts, et cetera, that can make investigations a little bit more long and drawn out. So, the goal is, is I hope, I hope that we interview three individuals, and they tell me, I have no direct evidence of discrimination. What I have is just a feeling that women aren't disvalued in the county because our wages are lower than the sheriff or the county attorney. And when you look at other counties, we've seen on the lower end. If that's the situation, that's a much shorter investigation than proof of discrimination or reasons that they feel like their wages are being suppressed. So, I know if I was to pick an hour amount, it'd be a shot in the dark. But I think. I mentioned this to Colin, I think, you know, our first step is always trying to figure out what are the motives of individuals. Is this about wanting to bring litigation, is this about wanting to do? A press release, so to speak, and create animosity and difficulty for elected officials? And, you know, we need to defend something in the public? Or is this just a internal, hey, you know, we don't want to do anything, we just want to make you aware, and we hope we can find a good resolution for next year, maybe catching us up? Well, that's going to depend on what that looks like, I always ask people, what are you looking for, what do you want to get out of this situation? And those responses are also very telling to me. Not a lot of folks have. A stomach for litigation, but when there's three of them, it gives people a boost in confidence, and so that's always a higher risk. But many times what I find is folks use it as a political position to harm reputations of current board members. And to create kind of a media stir, and again, I don't know these folks, I'm just, based on my past experience. It will be very interesting to also see what their motives are and what they're looking for, because that can tell us a lot. If it's litigation, obviously, we're, you know, we're going to make sure that we do everything we can to put the county in the best position possible to defend a claim should it arrive. And likewise, if it's a, you know, kind of a public witch hunt up, we want to expose people and be part of the Salt Me Too movement, not so much as a harassment standpoint of view, but in the. You know, women aren't treated fairly. That looks a little bit different, and our response to that is somewhat different, too. So. Our mantra is always, I think on these types of issues, we are ahead of ourselves if we can get in and interview folks before they've retained an attorney. If they've retained an attorney, that's okay, but it can draw the process a little bit longer, just coordinating schedules and some folks are hesitant about meeting and getting people on board. And so that can delay the process. But I would really have a better idea on timing and the number of interviews and expense after we interview the three individuals to see where this is headed.
Ms. Born, great question for you.
Say, Pam, I'm just curious, I guess, based on your twenty years of experience, what's the most a county's ever spent doing this? And what's the least a county's ever spent doing this in a similar situation?
Well, in, in, my similar situations would be discrimination or harassment type setting, not from elected officials, because in Nebraska. Elected officials are going to have standing to bring this type of claim, just not going to, you don't have standing. And that's one of the issues that we're sorting through here, is, you know, what powers do elected officials have to bring these types of. What I'll call either sex discrimination or wage discrimination claim. So, but on a typical investigation, I would guess that you're anywhere from ten to twenty-five thousand dollars.
Perfect, thank you. And Pam, I'm just, I was just curious, this is just to satisfy my own curiosity, is that on, when it talked about the, in section three. Two, when it says billing rates, it says my billing rate for this matter is three hundred and ninety per hour, is that what you typically charge, or is that just for this matter?
No, it's, it is a fee that. It's a standard rate for mine, but for example, if you were to call a county in. In the NERMA insurance pool, they have a discounted rate based on their bulk, which I believe is three sixty-five, and that's a negotiated rate through their insurer. So I'm always, I'm always upfront with folks about it, this is my standard rate, this is what, you know, someone not in a pool would pay. But our rates are adjusted on an annual basis, and so we typically give a notice to entities about that. So. You know, if I had a new matter for you guys, let's say a year from now, you would see that it wouldn't be, the rate would be adjusted in that engagement letter, which we would redo.
Pam, do you work across in Iowa much?
We have, I have several companies that either have home offices in Omaha or site in Iowa, and I work there in Iowa. I am not licensed in Iowa, so I'm able to do investigations and behind the scenes, but I don't appear in Iowa courts. I can use an attorney by the name of Pat Smith, well, we have several attorneys on our team that are licensed in Iowa. I just personally don't spend a lot of my time in the courtroom, because I, in order to be responsive to client calls and client investigations and. What I'll call more on a proactive basis, it's difficult to do if I'm heavy in litigation. So I don't spend a lot of time in Nebraska courts either, and so at that point, I, you know, another partner at my firm handles those types of matters. I spend the bulk of my day on the phone with employers, you know, with, hey, this is the issue we've got. Can you help us before we get a lawsuit, what can we do to be proactive, what can we do to get busy, and. Put ourselves in the best position.
And Pam, you and I talked about this, and you talked briefly about your participation in the county group in Nebraska, but your work experience is largely representing counties, right?
Correct, I only represent employers in my practice, so I'm only on management side. And a bulk of my practice is dealing with the public sector. And so, I mean, it's not just limited to counties, I also represent villages and other public entities. If I had to guess, I would tell you I'm pretty happy in the public sector, I would probably say. Anywhere from fifty to sixty percent of my work is dealing with the public sector. But again, only in the capacity of representing management.
Very good, thank you very much.
Anyone have any other questions? So this is a discuss and take action, this engagement letter, Miss Born would need before she got started. Of course, it would be signed by the chairperson, and then, of course, attached with the rest of the board, like normal. I guess, if there's no other questions, that's kind of where we're at for comments.
I would make a motion to get the discussion started, I'd make a motion to hire Miss Born. Her firm, I guess. As our independent counsel for interviewing.
Vesselman.
For doing an investigation to the recent complaint.
I have a motion.
I'm second.
I signed by Craig. Okay, further discussion.
See where it takes us.
I'd like to comment on that, I think Chelsea and Colin have researched and come to the conclusion that this would probably be our best avenue to take. And to find some resolution in this matter, and I think it's important that we go down this avenue to. To find a revolution that we're looking for.
We don't want any question for something that we need to learn. If she's working.
That's how I feel, I mean, to get to closure, a resolution that we need as a board, that we need to go down this avenue. That's, I mean, that's exactly the point, is having getting some non-biased information, that's what we talked about, so we can make a rational decision as a board. The best way that I can see to do that.
No further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair vote aye. You have one of these stamped.
Thank you, Pam, I'll get you copies of the signed engagement letter.
Sounds good, thanks for the opportunity, everyone, look forward to working with you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Chelsea.
Stay cool.
I guess whether or not you want to do the paperless billing is just a total.
It's up to Terry, I guess.
That's up to.
You can print that out.
I think it's just, it would be emailed.
Yeah, then you could print it out.
It would, yeah, there's still be a paper trail. Digital.
Would be a proverbial paper trail.
The new paper trail.
Hey, since you're here, and we're up next for opioid action class action settlement.
More paper. All right, so I reached out to Dave in an email last week, and in the middle of that email, I was like, you know what, this is probably something that needs the board's attention as a whole, so here we are. So. There's. And then there's more. So. The two pieces of paper I'm handing out is one, the second one I'm handing out is the email. Got notified because we are on. The opioid. Email chain. With, I mean, we've settled with manufacturers leaving the state and the county, because the county joined on. Manufacturers, distributors, and Purdue Pharma, this is in that same. Class action settlement, these are new. Companies, Alvolgin, Amneal, Apotex, Kikma. Mylan, Sun, Zytus, Invidor, I don't know how to say those names. So. The one hand out is the email, that email came with the attachment, the attachment with the red at the top, or the document with the red at the top is the attachment. And it offers the settlement overview, much like the other opioid settlements, this is a class action settlement now with new companies. This is a, as you can see on both documents, but on the back page of the. The one with the red on it. It's an opt-in, and opt-in is by October eighth of this year. The county has opted in or been part of previous opioid litigation class action settlements, otherwise the county could have. Opted out and then pursued a separate settlement on its own against these companies, but this, but the state has done all the heavy lifting. For those counties that want to let the state do that, and then kind of just join in on a percentage basis. That's calculated and negotiated between the companies and the state as part of the settlement. How much Crawford County would get, I don't know in particular, but I know this formula, much like the previous formula, they have some. I don't even understand, impact to the county versus, you know.
And the state keeps a portion and then the division, yeah, I don't even know how.
And then eventually we just get checked.
Supposedly the counties that are bigger that would have a larger.
That would be, I think there are some counties that did go on their own.
For us, it'd be hard.
Some have to pay immediately. Sun and Zytus.
It would be monumental. Monumental.
I mean, this certainly is something that, I mean, you certainly have to participate, because it's over that Amneal is ten years. Mylan is nine years, so there's going to be payments coming for a while, even if our percentage certainly.
Absolutely, I don't think there's.
Have a chance to, I mean, that's a lot of time in the future.
And I think we've also done a very, very good job of using the opioid funds that we've already received, make a big difference in our community, so.
Absolutely.
If we just added that.
Yeah, I think we'd be still not participate in it.
We're not getting our own attorney to go after.
I think the opt-in option is the best.
Let's make a motion that we opt in.
And I actually, that's the board's pleasure, I can opt in.
Second.
On behalf of the county.
Your motion by Ty.
No, Jean made it.
Jean made the motion. Craig just seconded.
Because when we saw that money first come in, and we, you know, there's so many different options, always for education.
Remediate opioid addiction.
Now, without, there even a meeting place in Crawford County, I think that those funds could. Getting something back into our.
Yes.
Oh, on the back page.
You want me to. Which we wanted to do, but we didn't, you know.
We didn't have the money.
If you want the big list billings.
Especially if they're one.
When can we get our first check?
Right away.
Oh, yeah, 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 it'll make, it'll make the monthly billing payment easier.
Colin, it says. Oh, I'm sorry. That's, several of them have to pay immediately, so wouldn't that mean that those funds would be coming very soon? Sun and Zytus.
Well, sometime after October eighth, because that's the deadline to opt.
But still.
Yeah. Kyle called the question.
Previous question?
All in favor of a person to opt in for this class action lawsuit, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
And I will get that done, and I'll send out confirmation to each of them.
Thank you for bringing that up to our attention.
Yep.
Yeah. Wait for the job.
Are you caught up to move on?
Yes, sir, I think I am.
Urban revitalization renewal, this is our tax abatement, we discussed this last week, we needed to do this first before we can approve any of the abatements that are on our agenda.
Fabulous to have all of these new constructions and new sites and new additions, so to have an urban revitalization plan is great, so I think we need to have a motion to.
So will this be a resolution then, I wasn't given, I have the old one, but. In twenty fourteen it was. I don't know about twenty nineteen, if it was.
Twenty fourteen, we established the resolution.
Yep, and then twenty nineteen it was. Because that would have been five years, it would have been. Three.
Three.
I don't know, so maybe it's just a reestablishment.
This is a reestablishment.
Okay.
Because it stays the same.
Right.
But I don't know. Unless you're changing something, but.
Nope, nope, everything stayed the same.
Wanted to keep it all the same. It has been placed in order for us to authorize these tax abatements, because it had five.
Makes you renewing it.
Does that urban revitalization renewal, is that, it does have an end date to it?
Just in case you wanted to make some changes, or if you wanted to away with the plan altogether, you know, if you were finding that wasn't bringing the revenue.
When did it actually, when did it expire?
Well, two thousand nineteen and twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four, so it hasn't been in place for over.
And that's why we have a. Black log.
Go back.
Being held.
All right. No, actually, this is a great, it's a great idea.
Yes.
You need to promote that at the county.
We do.
I think it's been doing what it's meant to do.
Exactly.
Absolutely have. So I'll make a motion that we renew our revitalization.
Five years.
For five years.
My motion by Jean, so I got my tie, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Do we need to do each of these separately, or we do it as. As presented.
We reviewed them all last week, and they are all good.
We've reviewed them twice.
Swilling board, I guess.
I mean, I don't think it matters from a time standpoint, it won't take as long to, we're through, or we could just say, we could just say we approve as presented, and Terry can copy down every single address. That's, you know, on here. We're in motion, you know.
So we're through them all.
We've been through them all. They all map to the requirement, right?
Yep.
That was a question to be. Yeah, we're prepared.
Reviewed the applications.
So your motion would need to.
I I I will just say I move that we approve the tax abatements as presented on our agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
We have eight of them, did one of them put that in there, that eight? Should we hit a loss?
It'll be fine.
From the amendment?
See this much construction.
I know.
Amendment four.
It's fine. I was just saying if we want to clarify, we're good.
They're all listed out. Terry can list the addresses of which one.
I just was having a conversation over the weekend that nobody's building stuff in Crawford County and like. I pulled the agenda and I'm like, oh, country, right?
Yeah.
Take a look, see.
Alright, yeah, this is proof and footing.
Great, it's great.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Our tax abatements are approved.
That won't be on the agenda.
Okay, we can move on to citizens input. Sherry, do you have anything for us? Anybody on Zoom? Can you hear anyone? Didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I know you did it.
Sir, throw us.
So I wasn't, yeah, Sarah didn't show, I wasn't here last week and I understand you were. It was presented to you that tax billing is ready to go. No, it's not. It's not, I would like to get as close as we can and I know, and it's not due to lack of effort, I understand that everybody is trying. Very hard to get it accomplished. I've talked with Tyler, that that's our software company, trying to make sure that I wasn't losing my mind. That I was wrong, I wanted to not, I wanted to be wrong, but I'm not, I don't think I am wrong. But anyway, and that's not the point, I just would. I don't know how to get there and I just want to get as close as we can, because if we were to bill taxes right now. And I don't know if you want Maddie to be here for this, I don't want to have a conversation that pertains to her. And her department without her present. I get that, I understand that, I don't. Never my intention, but I just wanted the board to be aware that if we are, if we're to process tax billing currently. There will be problem in the treasurer's office when they come to pay their taxes. Because the people that have sold property, especially especially the property that is actually changing names. If it's like a split or consolidation within a family unit and it's not changing name, less, I think, less detrimental to the billing process. But as far as if we were to bill taxes now and property is changing names, the seller. Will get those statements. And I want to do whatever I can do to help, if there's something I can do to help, I will help. Mary's been kicking tail feathers and getting it done. And I know it's a little back and forth action between us and the assessor, it's, you know, not a clear and concise process.
So it's not, it's not a recording issue.
It's not recording, no, things have been recorded.
It's a reported problem.
Yeah, right now I'm working on 10 deeds from March. That I just got a plaque back finalized.
So what what's the process then when someone, if I buy property from Ty and we take it to the recorder's office and record that. Then the recorder's, recorder sends it to this office. To the auditor's office and then the auditor, you send it to the assessor's office or?
The transfer slip.
Transfer slips, so they know.
The names actually have changed, but I don't know what they do down there besides I get all these calls. I don't see my name on the GIS map. My name isn't on the assessor's website, when I pull it up, it still has Craig's name, not mine. I just today now, about 10 minutes ago, Tracy brought me these. They're all separate. By clips, these are splits and consolidations all dated in March.
Well, Maddie, come on up there.
That I need to go through and make sure.
When you get back in, do they have to go back?
Then when they're done, then we're going to.
Those are, are those ones that just came up?
Or they want to bring a chair up and sit down, that'd be great.
Uh, no, splits and consolidations, but I still, I need to go through and check every one of these to make sure. It's not involved in a transfer and these are all dated in March, March 7th, March 11th. That's pretty much the two dates that are on them.
Okay, so those were the ones that you had processed in March. Those are the ones that I had processed a couple of weeks ago that I had brought up to you and I see if it would help try to change it up. Yep. So you did have those that information on hold.
But not the slips. But not the slips, I go by, if I have this back, then I know I need to check these particular parcel numbers. Without this, it's already off my computer screen. Unless I keep a copy of everything I give to you, I don't know what I give to you.
Okay.
So without this slip. I don't have a listing of what. What I.
Okay, so you didn't go through those and you printed those off, those up sheers.
No, because you have to finalize and.
Those ones are from you finalizing them, you remember going through like merging them all?
Yep.
Yeah, but those ones are from you finalizing them on my behalf, which I really appreciate your help.
And that's on your path, not necessarily mine, because I didn't compare any of this to any deeds that are due needing to be processed. Frankly, because at that time I didn't have the time to do it, because I was doing other deeds from Platts that came out. So, I mean. I'm busy and now this is work from March that I have to go back to to go through.
These are all we heard is that we're brought up to you.
So. That I processed to start with my part in March, which I recognize that I did not do this process in March. There was a new person handling this process and it was not. I'm just saying, I heard you say you're waiting on us to get everything done, well, these are from March that I waited for.
At this point, we are waiting for you. I'm sorry for your frustration and the situation, this is not the time and place to take it out, we're in a public meeting.
I know, I've been very cordial, I've been very helpful with, but the board seems to be supporting you. You, you, you and not listening to me saying. I have a lot on my plate because I'm the one that does it, when you're done, it comes to me. So I understand how busy you are. But I have to do the last step so the treasurer's office can get all the right things for the taxes.
Okay.
And when that doesn't get done. It's looked upon me that I'm not doing and completing my job. So I'm just here to let them be aware, I'm waiting on things too, not just you. Okay, is that fair?
Really feels like I'm being chewed out right now.
So not chewing you out, I'm just. I'm, I'm making it aware to the board. With all your training people, hiring people and all that, I can appreciate all of that, but that still doesn't mean I'm waiting for things. And I feel like they're like, well, what's the problem, just get it done. Well, I'm waiting for things too. That's all I'm saying.
There is a delay this year, it happens to every county, it doesn't, we're not the only people that have gone through it. I think that tension has been escalated through this whole situation. And I think that there needs to be a lot of forgiveness that goes throughout all of this, because everybody.
I I don't really have a beef with anybody, I understand everything. But I feel like. The wrong emphasis is being put on the wrong people about the process.
The emphasis we put on.
Just the process, the process is not being completed. In a timely manner.
And I agree that our office was not able to complete this process in a timely manner and I have apologized to you profusely. Every same time you come into my office, so you coming in here and me feeling like I'm being chewed out. Or me feeling like.
It's nice letting you admit that in front of this board, that it's not just our office that's delaying things.
Saying that it was just your office at the meeting where I spoke with Sherry.
That's how I first started feeling, was that I'm not giving things to you, I've dumped things on you.
Over this last week, there has been delays in giving these things back to this office and then if you want to continue with that conversation. This split does not need to be processed and you guys are having our office continue to process it. I recognize that that is a choice that you are making.
Look at when this is, look at when the plaque was.
It doesn't really matter at this point. We are behind and we have to recognize that and pivot to accommodate. So I recognize that we are behind, we have one. That is technically in our office holding things up. If that is going to happen, if I need to call these persons, people personally myself, I will. It is not as big of a deal as it is known to be.
Like you were saying too, that all this stuff was done in June, I didn't get it until the second week of July.
I didn't say it was all done in June, I said it was done at the meeting where I was, what, the last meeting or the Tuesday where there wasn't a meeting.
We understand it needs to be done. Understand that. There's been challenges along the way. Just ask that you guys work together, have a communication and do you guys the best.
There's been a lot of favoritism to the assessor's office and I get they're the ones that have been having the struggles with new people and things not being done. I get that, but. The whole process needs to be done. I I don't know, I don't know what the answer is, but I just feel like. If things don't get done.
I don't think the board's fault in anybody, or at least this board has, to my knowledge, I mean, we know you guys have got a struggle, I mean. Not one time when you explained to me that all the whole process, this is totally control state for you, right, there, but. I mean, I I get it, but I think they do have to create a sense of checks and balances throughout the whole system so that it gets better, correct, the building.
Right.
But I think that.
But when I do something in March. I have to bring my brain all the way back to March if there's an issue. And that's hard to do when I'm dealing with stuff that happened yesterday.
Yeah.
So I'm just saying it's not easy for me either.
We should have expected.
That it's a lot of work. So if things don't get done, even though our office has a bag. To me, this isn't a timely manner, getting March documents back in July, I'm sorry. Problems are no, I'm not chewing you out, I understand everything.
It's not a timely manner, but that is a product of the situation that we're in. And it's not an easy problem to be fixed.
When do we think that we'll all be done?
All of our problems, if the tax statements will roll out properly, not just mine.
And unfortunately, there, it's nothing that anybody that doesn't have some knowledge can just sit down and help, it's like, you know, if it was simple, we would all be doing it. And I I would say help you, but what you do is so articulate and so time consuming and so.
Right. And I, I've been kind of training Megan a little bit.
Yeah.
But she doesn't know how to do things. Everything, so she can't really help me either, so it's just me to do all this.
So how do, how does this affect the taxpayer?
The ones at her hands or overall?
Overall, I mean, will all statements be sent at the same time or will some statements be sent sooner than other statements?
All statements get sent at the same time.
Same time.
It's just that there's a document that like say you you said you sold to Ty. If that document doesn't get complete and transferred, you are gonna get the tax statement that says you owe these taxes.
So our office doesn't handle anything with simple sales, we track that information and we process it and we send it to the state. But anything that comes in, the deed is recorded or the document is recorded in the recorder's office. And then they provide us with the declaration of value for our tracking for the state and they provide the auditor's office with the document that actually transfers the sale. Then the auditor's office inputs that information into the tax software and then that information, when you roll over the year to the treasurer's year. Is where that information comes from, so anything, a regular transfer. That does not come to our office and affect taxes, so that is a solely treasurer, auditor, recorder process. In terms of getting the right tax management statement to the right person. For what is in her hand, those are plats of surveys, those are somebody with a surveyor went out and. Mary likes to raise boots on the ground, measured out of property and then. Records the document with the recorder's office, it gets provided to the auditor's office. And then it gets sent down to us to split off those parcels in our GIS, gets sent down to us to split off those parcels in our appraisal software. And then we send it back up here because it's easier to have the tax software split off in the prior year and then we do the finalizing of values in the tax software there. And so that's where we figure out the 2024 value, the 2025 value or in more common or like general terms. Our current year and our prior year, so every time, so those that she's getting, those are all merges in her hand. So merges, it would be a very weird situation to have two parcels merged into one. And a different person now is buying a chunk of that parcel, so yes, Mary does need to review those, they for sales. But they, unless they've merged and then were sold, there should be no problem with who gets the tax statement. And what else is there to touch on?
Well, I will say every transfer that I do, I get several calls, I don't show them. When I look on the assessor's side, that I own this property and I don't show this on the GIS system. So then they have to say you don't do anything with the everyday transfers.
Well, we don't, so what that is is Tyler, once you get it changed in Tyler, then updates to the website. And that's not a daily instantaneous thing and we don't, it's all a digital thing, so it's nothing that we do. Pretty much by hand, we don't take the sale and input it into Vanguard and then it shows up on the site. It is Tyler transfers the name over to Vanguard and Vanguard updates to our website, so it's a process that takes time. Because unless we wanted to make it instantaneous and cost the county more money, then you just answer the question and send them to the appropriate office. So the website does have a disclaimer that it is not totally all accurate because of things like delays like that. Where it's time to get out there.
Yeah.
So how delayed could they be from a mailing out standpoint through the treasurer's office?
That's all that you're worried about here.
I'm kicking. Myself to get all those things transferred of all the plats I got back.
I'm sure.
But there were 80 a month ago, 80 deeds I needed to finish.
What day do we usually send out the statements?
Usually around the 15th or shortly thereafter. Always to August. And that gives people anxiety, they're calling me wanting to know when they're getting at their statements, what their taxes are, et cetera, et cetera.
So they're aware of the situation and calling you?
Yes.
Okay.
And they're also, the other thing I was just researching the other day is if I don't get tax statements out by a certain date and I'm still looking at that. We have to change the due date for the property taxes.
Makes sense.
And that's me trying to keep up with the day to day because the deeds keep coming in. So I stopped doing deeds.
Person picking things up.
Middle of July and I've been working on my old stuff.
So have you always done this, Mary? Have you been at the courthouse?
Yeah.
Well, not since I've been at courthouse, but since 2009.
2009, and this is a process we've always had, I guess it always begs to ask, is there a better process, does every county to do this the exact same way that Crawford County does it?
No. 99 counties, 99 different ways.
You can't just call one county and it. Just call one county and expect to get all the answers.
So I know last year you guys stopped processing, then doing daily sales. Uh, is that something that you feel is necessary in the process to put priority on the ones that, um, do have those. Plaque and surveys.
Older ones, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
That's definitely so.
That's why, is that why you have a lot of time?
If you didn't have a document.
Figure out at one site.
Of record before July recers.
Why is everybody doing that?
Necessarily change on the tax statement, that was just kind of why, you know.
And is that, and is that by code or is that by just preference?
That's, I don't know.
So I mean, I. That would be something a little hinty because you decided that July first is your date, it may speed things up for you. To get the numbers to the treasurer's office, because if that's how it was standards, there must be no harm in going back to it if you find that that's the case.
I, I just think, yeah, July first was the date because if it had to go through or process. It wouldn't be entered before July first, it wouldn't be changed on the taxes.
Kyle has a comment.
Like, then move to July fifteen.
I'm not speaking for the whole board, I'm speaking for myself, I don't favor one officer or the other, I just want the process to work flawlessly. And, and that's not, what I've seen through this discussion. Like, I mean, we have the lack of redundancy, Bill, I mean, if you were, something happened to you, Mary, I mean, it sounds like. There would be a dead end and that.
I told you that multiple times.
And I'm not pointing no fingers at anything, I'm not just saying, I'm just. Uh, and we've seen the kind of, what happened with everything going on there, how everything is kind of. As a, as a courthouse in the hole, maybe these are, take, what's going on now and trying to build some redundancy and the things is.
Yep.
None of it.
And that's.
And I'm not, I'm just, these are the things I'm pointing, I know.
Why she's teaching Megan.
Yeah.
Because it's not something she learned overnight, she has forty years. In the county.
We don't know anything about.
We're getting pretty loose here.
And I'm not complaining, I'm not, we don't know nothing about it, it's not our area to know that you guys, this is your area.
But we are working as team.
You're working as a team, that's all we can ask.
Not just we can have.
Thank you for that.
Why don't we ask you to continue?
I agree, Kyle, I don't think anybody's supporting anybody one more than another and I think we're just hoping you guys can get caught up. Do the best you can, that's all you can do.
And I appreciate the teamwork and.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, yep, thank you very much, we, we bring these things out and then hopefully we have a result.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
You guys, it's a word to see, be prepared to deal with a lot of calls, so.
Right.
And I thank you for that because we will get the calls and we are fully. Invested in the whole process and we understand that there's been some, some hiccups, I guess, and, uh, we apologize.
Two to three years worth of hiccups.
Yeah, yeah, so. And I understand the frustration for that person that sold the property in, uh, January and I get the tax statement, what in the world, I'd, you know. I'd be that person.
Terry, you have anything else for us?
Thank you. Yeah.
All right.
That's all, citizen input.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Sup, Carl, and everybody.
Wish I could.
I think I'd make a bigger mess for them.
I know, I'd make, well.
They'd spend more of their time teaching me what to do than get some things done.